All right, we're all settled in here. So, welcome to the July 23rd, 2024, 6:30 PM, City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on June 11th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minister approved. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. We'd like to do an administrative adjustment to the agenda this evening. The City Attorney would like to add an item to his report, and I'll let him describe what that item is.
Correct. The city has received a petition to establish a CDD for Willow Creek and to do an amendment to an existing CDD. If you recall, previously, we had staff had retained Ken Arton with Bryant Miller Olive to assist in that process, and they'd like to do the same thing. So I have an engagement letter from Ken Arton of Bryant Miller Olive for Council's consideration and approval, and we can do that under my report at the end of the meeting, if you're so inclined.
May I have a motion to add that to the City Attorney's position?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? City Attorney, we've added it to your report. All right, City Manager.
On to Boards and Commission, Item 6A. The Titusville Environmental Commission semi in your report is included in your packet. No actions required.
Thank you very much. Hold up, hold up. Laura Lee, come on up. That's why I hesitated. I'm like, well, I see Laura Lee here. And so we're... Good read, Laura Lee.
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Memes, Florida, and I'm the Chair of your Environmental Commission, which is your advisory board. The report is in your packet, so you can read that. The only thing, I want to talk about the landscape technical manual. I want to thank you for your support of the Titusville, the new tree list and plant list in the manual that now includes almost 70% native plants. And there was a lot of work went into that, and we really appreciate your support. And if you want to see a really nice example of how wonderful Florida native plants look in the landscape, pay attention to the landscape and at the library the next time you're there. It's all Florida natives, and it's spectacular. So, but the other thing that I want to do is, I want to do a commercial for the public engagement for the Titusville Natural Resources. You guys have hired a consultant to work with the TEC and the public to try to get suggestions and ideas on what people would like to see as far as our environment is concerned in the city. And Abby made these wonderful flyers. There's a whole pile of them right on the front desk at Dixie Crossroads. If you want to get one for yourself, you can just pull your car right up to the door, get out, and go get the flyer. You don't even have to go in and eat any fritters. But there's a big pile of them sitting right there. There's a QR code to get to the website. There's a survey on the website that you can fill out, you know, so you can let the consultants know what you think, you know, about our water quality in the Indian River Lagoon, our aging infrastructure that we have problems with, tree canopy and preservation, land acquisition and conservation, and wetland and floodplain regulations. So, you know, this is our opportunity to get involved, you know, for everybody in the city. We would like for everybody that lives here to get on the website and make comments about what you think Titusville should do as far as our natural resources. And that's it, unless you have any questions. The website, I'll tell you the website, it's long, but it's www-inspired-and-then-there's-a-hyphen-engagement.com/titusville-nat res sources. So, it's a mouthful.
It sure is.
Like I said, you can pick these up at Dixie Crossroads, and you can probably do a search, and maybe there's an easier way to get, Brad, is there an easier way to get to the website?
Yes, we've included that in our newsletters. I believe there's even an announcement inside of Titusville Talking Points. So, we've tried to get the word out. We've also included a link that was just read by Ms. Thompson inside everybody's water bills, too, so that's going on as well. So, the survey is open until about the middle of August.
Right, yeah. So, we have until the middle of August to collect your comments, and it would be really, really helpful. We want to hear from everybody. So, thank you.
Hold up, Laura Lee. Member Nelson?
I was just going to say that Laura Lee and I, in a moment of insanity, agreed to take a bunch of kids from the Boys and Girls Club out to Mosquito Lagoon and then over to the Cove to see the manatees. And there were so many manatees over there, it wasn't even funny. And the grass in Mosquito Lagoon looks fantastic.
Yeah.
We survived. I came home and took two aspirin.
Yeah. It was, when we took them sailing, they were really well behaved, maybe because it was a new experience and they were trying to be good. But then when we went on the bus ride to the aquarium in Daytona, whoa.
We took 21 kids to the aquarium.
Yeah.
In Daytona.
That's called, well...
Great aquarium, horrible bus ride.
Laura Lee, thanks for what you do. Thanks for heading up to TEC, and thank you so much. Yeah. Good call. Okay, City Manager.
On to 6B, which is Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The terms of regular members, Christian Smith Rodriguez, Public at Large, Al Taylor, Associated with Building Trades and Industry, Dr. Gina Beckles, Associated Building Trades and Industry, and alternate member David Mendernak, Public at Large, expire on 31 July 2024. Regular members, Smith Rodriguez, Taylor, and Beckles have all indicated that they will continue to serve on this board with an expiring term on 31 July 2026. Alternate member David Mendernak, Public at Large, does not wish to be reappointed. In your packet, it says we were having troubles getting ahold of Dr. Beckles. We finally did get ahold of her, and she does want to be reappointed.
So, we do that all at one time?
Sure.
If we wish. Member Nelson?
I think some of the people are here. I saw Al. I know, somewhere, yeah.
Yeah. Anybody who's on that list, would you like, if you want to come up and say a word, that's fine. If you don't, just wave, and we'll move forward. Got a wave? I think that's all we got. Okay, we got a wave.
Cards?
We haven't been, yeah, so...
Okay. Move to repoint. Kristen Smith Rodriguez, Thomas A. Taylor, Dr. Gina Beckles, to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I was going to say, for a term that expires, whatever, term to expire July 31st, 2026.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City Manager.
Petitions and requests?
Petitions and requests from the public, and of course, I don't have to say, of course, we're not moving. Okay, City Manager.
Consent agenda items A through H. City Council, are there any questions of staff for consent A through H?
Vice Mayor, are you on?
No.
Okay. I see none.
City Council, is there any agenda item, or consent agenda items that you'd like to pull for further discussion?
I see none.
City Clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda items A through H? Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the citywide generator inspection and maintenance and repair contract award. Consent agenda item 8B, approve Amendment 2 to FDEP grant agreement for the City of Titusville stormwater improvements projects. Consent agenda item 8C, approve and appropriate the use of forfeiture funds for special investigation services. Consent agenda item 8D, approve Amendment Number 2 for equipment lease schedule with Bank of America. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the cost-sharing funding interlocal agreement Amendment 1, riverfront center nutrient-removing filter boxes with the Save the Indian River Lagoon project. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the award for the sidewalk infill. Consent agenda item 8G, approve Amendment Number 5 with Wright Pierce Incorporated for the Morning Dove Water Treatment Plant Solid Strain Update. And consent agenda item H, 8H, approve the budget amendment for water and sewer capital improvements.
Excuse me, Mayor. We do have one card for item F.
Okay. Call the card, please.
Trenton Mansfield.
Item F. F.
It's for the sidewalks.
Okay, gotcha. Go ahead.
Trenton Mansfield, Titusville resident. I'm questioning the contract for the sidewalks. How many miles of sidewalk is that? I was looking through the agenda packet, and I couldn't find it.
Do we have that, Mr. Parrish, or whoever may answer it? Kevin, I'm sorry.
It's almost 10,000 square yards, so I'd have to, one second, I'll do a quick math.
10,000 square yards?
Yeah.
Was that 30 miles? I don't know. I'm not certainly doing that math.
Just curious, because that's a lot of money for sidewalks.
So, five foot wide, it's about 18,000 feet, so roughly three miles of constructed sidewalks?
So, three miles of constructed sidewalk for, okay, I was just curious, because that's a lot of money for, for three miles. I was just curious. And you said 8, 10,000?
10,000 square yards of sidewalk construction.
So, not square yards of concrete?
Yeah, that's the concrete for the sidewalk. There's a whole bunch of other pay items. I was just pulling that one, because that's the one specific to sidewalks and driveway crossings. This project will fill every gap in all of our collector redways completely.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. I was just questioning the, because one mile of sidewalk is approximately, at four inches thick, four foot wide, is approximately 325 cubic yards. And you're saying 10,000, that's, I was just curious. And that's a lot of money for three miles of sidewalk, and I was just asking why it's $1,252,542.27.
Yeah, I could let you know that the consultant estimate was 2.5 million. So, this one came in about half of our consultant's estimate. So, that was actually one of our few bids that come in below bid. And just for the gentleman, we use six-inch sidewalk and five-foot wide minimums. So, but yeah, that's, it is about half of, roughly half of the estimate based on DOT contract amounts this year. So, this was actually a favorable award for us.
It sounds like...
Okay, six inches of sidewalk, five foot wide, one mile is 488 yards, 8, 489 yards. So, that's, I don't know how much, it can't be much over two. I was just, that's a lot of money for sidewalk. And so, if you do that times three, that's under 1,500 cubic yards of concrete. So, I was just asking, why is it one million, I mean...
That's because bid came in, I mean...
I understand. It's just a lot of money for three miles of sidewalk, and I was just...
And certainly, I get that side of it, but at other meetings that you're not here sometimes, people are always saying, why don't we have sidewalk here?
No, I understand, I understand. And I was just...
And we still don't have all the sidewalk they want. So...
Okay.
Anyway, appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do. All right. No other card? Member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through H.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City Manager.
Item 9A, which is Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, SSA Number 3-2022. City Attorney will read the quasi judicial rules.
Mayor, for the public's benefit, I just want to remind everybody, this is comprehensive plan, small-scale amendment number 2, 2022, which includes ordinances 19, 20, 24, and 20, 20, 24, which is a land use and zoning ordinance. When we open the public hearing, we'll open the public hearing as to both ordinances. So, if you put in a card and you wish to speak, and the applicant's going to address the items, you will be addressing both the land use and the zoning at that time. At the close of the public hearing, we will then vote on the items separately, land use first and zoning second. Ordinance number 19, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use designation for approximately 25.9 acres of land located at 8225 Windover Way with Brevard County Parcel ID Number 22, 3530 AV 65, from the commercial high-density and rez conservation land use designations to the planned unit development land use designation, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 20, 2024, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification of approximately 25.9 acres of land located at 8225 Windover Way with Brevard County Parcel ID Number 22, 3530 AV 65, from the regional commercial RC and open space and recreation OR zoning classifications to the planned development PD zoning classifications, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to also go over the quasi judicial proceeding rules. During this public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on the quasi judicial items must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the City Council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the City Council swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that does wish to speak on these public hearing quasi judicial items, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council members shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding quasi judicial items, said visits or opinions shall be disclosed. At this time, it would be appropriate for council to disclose any ex parte communications.
We'll go down with Member Stokel. Come this way. Let's go this way. Member Stokel?
Yes. Okay, I have spoken to a few people. One, Jordan Chandler, he reached out just asking if I had any questions about the project. I did not form an opinion based on our discussion. Also, met with the applicant, Cole Oliver, discussed the project, discussed potential plans for the project, what could be used potentially at that site, and no opinion was formed from that discussion. Also, discussed with Jason Steele, with his experience and expertise in the field of real estate, his comments concerning it and how it could potentially benefit the City of Titusville. No formal opinion was made during that conversation. And lastly, also talked to Robin Fisher briefly about it, and just asking if I had questions and just his view on how it could potentially bring in revenue for the city. And no formal opinion was made during that discussion as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
In addition, you provided me emails that you had also received.
Sorry about that. Yes. In addition, I forwarded all emails that I received and read from citizens. Those were mostly in opposition to the project, concerns about traffic, land use. It's very similar to what we heard during our first reading, and no formal opinion was made via those emails.
And those emails have been forwarded to the applicant as well?
Yes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just had one brief conversation with them, a pleasant conversation with the applicant. We talked like we were knowing. He understood what I said. Didn't change my conversation. It was in alignment with what I said, sitting here behind the dais on our last meeting about safety. And we talked a little bit about the different tax revenue that's involved. And that was a total, that's the conversation I, and George speaking with him. And I told him that.
All right, very good. Similarly, I met with Cole Oliver to discuss the project. Jason Steele attended one of them, and quite honestly, was mostly an observer. And that's, as I recall it. But I did meet with Jason Steele and Cole Oliver. Got a lot of emails, read a lot of emails, forwarded to City Manager, and as you said, forwarded them onto the applicant. And I'm trying to think, I think I'd say it. Member Nelson?
I talked to Joanne Griffin, who owns Rango's. Her concern was that she has no place for her workers to live. She was in support of the development. Spoke to Jim Swan about other options for that piece of property, which would include a hotel, live local, commercial center. Spoke to Jason Steele, who was in support of the development. Spoke to Cole Oliver, who went over the development with me. Spoke to Robin Fisher, who likewise, we discussed the financial implications. And what he was pointing out was Solomar Grand brings in $650,000 in property taxes each year. And he was like, if you're doing this to continue the lifestyle for the people at Windover, you're doing that at the expense of our taxpayers, because that revenue is not in our pockets. So, therefore, our taxes potentially won't be lower. So, I have to say, you know, that sort of made me think. But I haven't made any firm decisions.
Member Cole?
Yes, I spoke with Cole Oliver and Robin Fisher, similar conversations to councilperson Nelson about the taxing, taxes that we receive from this property. And the amount of taxes that we receive would be about a half a million dollars. I, too, have not made a decision, but I, I'm still pondering it. But it didn't change my decision from what it's been all along.
All right, City Attorney.
Have you received the emails that was referenced from council members?
Yes, no problem. But I'm the City Manager forwarding those. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. And with regard to order presentation, you will receive staff's presentation, followed by the presentation of the applicant. Then the floor will be opened to public comment. The applicant will then be entitled to make a rebuttal.
On 19 June 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, recommended denial of the Project 7-0. The applicant, Bristol Development Group, LLC, has requested a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning to develop a planned development project consisting of six four-story multifamily buildings with a total of 304 units, an associated clubhouse, open space areas, and ancillary parking, and stormwater infrastructure on the property located at 8225 Windover Way. The property lies south of Cheney Highway, State Road 50, west of Windover Way and Windover Farms of Titusville Residence Subdivision, east of I-95 and north of the land currently utilized as Hobby Remote Controlled Aircraft Park. The request is illustrated on the master plan, is controlled by PD ordinance. A separate amendment to add the proposed residential density of 11.7 units per acre to the comprehensive plan is included with the comprehensive plan amendment CPA 2-2024. Mr. Parrish is here to give you a presentation, followed by the applicant.
Council, Mayor and Counsel, I have, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. The applicant's going to provide that after my summary. I am going to go through the staff report and just kind of highlight... and just kind of highlight how we evaluated this application and this petition and why they decided to go through this process, what they had to provide to us. And then I'll summarize our findings and our recommendations. I'll also point out some of the exhibits that were provided to us so that you have a good understanding of what's being presented here tonight. The application, or I'm sorry, the staff report begins on four-twenty-seven of your packet. So again, the application is a request to amend the city's comprehensive plan feature land use map from, on this piece of property, from the commercial high-intensity land use category to the planned unit development land use category. That is a specialized category. In order to utilize that particular land use category, the comprehensive plan also requires, in addition to this, a text amendment to the comprehensive plan, which has to be processed separately. With this planned unit development, it also, in order to justify utilizing it, they'd have to include a master plan that was also included. So with the evaluation of the text amendment, you're supposed to include the master plan and evaluate it for justification of putting the density inside the comprehensive plan. I'll describe a little bit about what that means in a moment. And then also amending the map. So you have two different ordinances and two different agenda items. So nine A is the map, and nine B is the text to the comprehensive plan. Included with nine A, you have, in order to implement the PUD land use category that's being requested, they are submitting a planned development zoning district, which is a tailor-made zoning district in order to implement the policies of that comprehensive plan and implement the policies and criteria of the planned development zoning, which is a special category that we allow applicants to utilize to create a unique zoning district. It has to include special conditions, which are tailored to this particular property, which I'll point out what those are in a moment. So the first action before you is to consider the request to change the land use from commercial high-intensity to the city's planned unit development land use category. If that is approved, then you'd consider approval of the rezoning, which is the rezoning of the property from regional commercial zoning and a sliver of land on the bottom of this piece of property from open space and recreation zoning to the planned development zoning district with associated master plan and conditions. And then after that, then you would consider the text amendment, the comprehensive plan amendment number two-dash-twenty twenty-two, to incorporate the maximum density into the city's comprehensive plan related to this particular land use category. Staff's recommendation on page four-twenty-seven is for you to consider the land use category. If you, and I'll show you the findings that we found in support of the application and request. And there were some findings we thought that might be some concern and that we didn't feel like we had enough information to make a real call as to whether this is supported or not. I can say that the current land use on the property, which I'll point out, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed land use, you'll need to make a judgment as to whether that is also consistent with the comprehensive plan. We could not find anything to say that the request was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. If the land use is approved, then you consider the rezoning with the conditions. And again, the trans, the, the comprehen, the text amendment, which, that action, that agenda number nine B, is not going to be approval of that amendment to the, to the text amendment into the comprehensive plan. Will it be, is a transmittal hearing. It's not a particular ordinance. It would have to go then to the state for their review. The state's land planning agency would then have to send back to us any comments or objections. And if we don't receive any objections, then we'll just process that as an ordinance later on this year. So even if this land use amendment, this map amendment is approved tonight and the rezoning is approved tonight, and then the trans, you still, the, the, the final action will be the transmittal amendment to the comprehensive plan. We'll have to wait for the state to complete their review. And then you'll have to adopt that text amendment to the comprehensive plan later this year before all of this becomes effective. I hope that was clear. If you have any questions about that process, I'll try and answer it.
Member Stokoe?
Do you have more of your presentation?
I do.
Okay, then I'll wait. Because they're not about the process.
I do want to make a couple of corrections in the staff report on page four-twenty-nine of your packet. We identified I- ninety-five, or the, the location east of this property to be I- ninety-five. That should be reversed. And then where it says west and the uses and future land use and the zoning as described should be located as east. So that, I just want to make that correction for the record on that page. That's page four-twenty-nine of your packet. And this is under the surrounding property information, existing use, future land use and zoning table. Another correction we want to make is what's, oh, is a reference to a future land use element strategy, one point sixteen point two we made in the, in the staff report. That is actually policy, one point sixteen point two. And that'll become relevant in a moment when I describe what that is. On page four-thirty of your packet, the staff report, is a short description or summary of what was presented to us. The property is about twenty-six acres, five and a half acres of which is wetland. Open space is about nine and a half acres. The proposal is to include three-hundred-and-four residential units on this property, which is currently not allowed with the current land use. Six buildings, four stories each. Number of residential units are broken out by type. The max residential density allowed in the planned unit development land use category is twelve. So they're asking just under that, eleven point seven. Proposed resident, I'm sorry, the maximum height, according to the planned development zoning, is fifty, and they are utilizing that. Maximum building coverage is fifteen percent, and the proposed maximum lot coverage is forty percent. And that's illustrated in the master plan and on, in the ordinance, the PD ordinance. On page four-thirty-one and four-thirty-two, I'm not going to go through this, but I just want to highlight that that is the city's sprawl criteria. And we tried to address each of those items as far as this project is either in violation or creating sprawl. And sprawl is basically defined as creating a development where you're going to have to extend a lot of resources or infrastructure to it in order to allow that to be developed. And it's better to usually to allow develop or encourage development in areas where infrastructure already exists. We did not believe that it was, this is, that this amendment is creating a sprawl issue. On pay, later on, we, on this staff report, on page four, starting on page four-thirty-one, or four-thirty-two, excuse me, consistency with the comprehensive plan. We tried to go through and identify land use, I'm sorry, goals, objectives, and policies and strategies inside the city's comprehensive plan that we believe are most relevant. There may be other goals, objectives, policies, and strategies that we did not identify in this staff report and address with an actual staff comment. You may find that that was probably deficient, and you may find that to be relevant and may want to utilize that as part of your review. What we've identified here is not complete. You certainly have the right to be able to include additional policies and object, and objectives and strategies that may be relevant to this. The first one I wanted to identify on page four-thirty-two of your packet is future land use element policy, objective one point nine. And it states, "The City of Titusville shall provide for appropriate and adequate land for commercial and land uses through the designation of commercial high-intensity and commercial low-intensity let use designations on the future land use map." Those are identified on the future land use map. There are subsequent policies and strategies after that objective. We did not go through and provide a comment of each of those policies subsequent to that. So you may see in the comprehensive plan there may be policies and strategies subsequent to this particular objective that I just read that may be also irrelevant. All of that is in general relevant. We just believe, we just identified that objective to say comprehensively that this particular property is consistent, or the land use category on this property is consistent with that objective and subsequent policies and strategies for commercial land uses according to the comprehensive plan. Later on, on the bottom of that page, you'll see a reference to a flu, future land use element, objective one point nineteen. That begins the, the planned unit development policies. If you remember, the future land use element is broken out into a goal and then several objectives. And each objective addresses different topics, one being commercial land use, one being residential land uses, and another one being a planned unit development land use. So this is the tool where it start, this is, that an applicant can use to maybe propose a unique development on a particular piece of property with this unique land use category and then this underlying zoning district. We tried to address each one of these policies underneath this particular objective. We felt it necessary to unique, to specifically address each one into the staff report here. You'll find that the policies are very general. They are very open-ended. It's very much up to, it's a legislative decision. Do you believe that the master plan that was associated with these, with this particular objective, one point nineteen, planned unit development land use category and, and subsequent policies are being met? We believe that, we couldn't find anything to say that the master plan was inconsistent with these, with this objective and subsequent policies. However, it does, these policies do talk about things such as enhancements, that the project should be unique, should have some kind of architectural style. What is it doing above and beyond what our code requirements or what the comp plan asks for? And that's a judgment call and a legislative decision that you need to make as part of this. We found that the information provided to us was relatively deficient. We didn't have enough information to really make a determination as to whether it was meeting those, these particular policies related to above and beyond standards. The applicant, I believe, has some information that they will provide to you and their testimony to address that. On page four-thirty-five of your packet, you'll see the text amendment that's related to comprehensive plan amendment number two-dash-twenty twenty-four under agenda nine B. So you see, under policy one point nineteen point twelve, this requires, it states, "All requests for a PUD land use designation shall include a master plan development plan." A master development plan. Plus, you must incorporate the maximum density into this table. So this is where the text amendment comes into play. And this has to go, this particular language has to go to the state if this is approved. And so if you approve the transmittal, it'll be transmitted to the state for their review. And then we'll have to wait for that. At your first reading, there were some concerns and objections brought up related to, to the conservation land use that's currently on the property. On the bottom of the property, there is a small sliver of land that has a current conservation land use on it. The applicant is proposing to change that plus the commercial high intensity land use category on the overall property, vote together and replace it with this planned unit development. We believe the comprehensive plan allows that. Specifically, on page four-thirty-five of your packet, you'll see future land use element strategy should say policy, one point sixteen point two. It says in the bottom half of that paragraph, of that policy, that the conservation land use shall be amended to include all wetland areas on the site to be preserved unless such wetlands are preserved by conservation easement as part of the planned development or master plan development and any other upland areas to be permitted for preservation for state and/or federal listed wildlife species. We also have a wetland overlay inside zoning overlay in the code, which addresses this and tells us how to implement that. And that can be done with an easement and preservation tracks as part of the planned development zoning district. The applicant has decided to utilize that tool. There was questions about whether they can do that and, and then have, that gives them benefit to have three-hundred-and-four residential units on here. We believe that they're, what they're proposing is consistent with the zoning overlay and this policy. So I won't go through the rest of the, what we've addressed on the policies and how we addressed each one that we thought was most relevant in this application. I'm just going to skip to page four-forty of your packet, where we started the, addressing the rezoning criteria. I do want to back up, actually. There was a statement at your first reading that the city has never approved this kind of tool where there was a wetland incorporated in a planned development zoning or a PUD land use category. That's untrue. We do have an example of that where that was utilized. And that's the Willow Creek development or Verona development. So to page four-forty of your packet, we tried to, or your staff report here, we had, we tried to address the rezoning criteria. Again, I'm not going to go through all of that. It does ask us just to make a determination of consistency with the comprehensive plan. We could not find anything to say it was inconsistent. The applicant did provide to us information to help address the rezoning criteria, which during a part of our review helped us determine what kind of the conditions that we would want to recommend as part of the PD rezoning ordinance. On page four-forty-one of your packet, there is a paragraph there, number two, existing zoning. And we provided some background information as far as the existing zoning and how this commercial high-intensity zoning got onto this property and some of the history related to it. This began in nineteen ninety-three. There have been, there were rezonings that happened in nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-eight. There, the, those zoning districts, I'm sorry, those ordinances that were approved at that time continued to govern this property. There was a concept plan that was incorporated or approved with, at that time, that still governs this property. So if this land use change is approved and the rezoning is approved, all of that would be replaced. And the master plan would govern this property from then on. On page four-forty-three of your packet, the code then asks us to review and address the criteria related to a PD. So not just the rezoning. In addition to that, because they're using a PD rezoning tool, there are additional criteria that we have to address. We believe that they've satisfied those. I do want to address one particular standard that has been brought up several times, including at their first reading. And that is on page four-forty-three of your packet. And this is related to section thirty-three dash five, paragraph A two of the code. This is a specific standard for a PD. And it states, "The planned development shall be so located with respect to arterial streets, collector streets, and other transportation facilities as to provide direct access to such PD without creating or generating traffic along local streets and residential areas or clusters outside the PD." We've stated that planned development will not create or generate traffic along the local streets, residential areas, or clusters outside the PD area. We are referring, every time there's a reference to access, transportation impacts, we refer back to one particular statement that we made on page ten of the staff report. On page ten of the staff report, which is page four-thirty-six On page 10 of the staff report, which is page 436 of your packet, this is our analysis of the transportation and access management information that was provided to us. They provided, the applicant provided to us a rezoning traffic impact analysis, which is basically a land use comparison, comparing the existing land use, vested rights on that property with that governing concept on the property versus what they're proposing. Based on the information they provided to us, they believe that there is not going to be, this is a less of an impact. But either way, I just want you to understand that if a proposal was submitted to us under the current commercial zoning, commercial land use, we would have to evaluate it for that traffic impact at that time for that particular proposed development and for concurrency review. We would have to, we will have to do that. If this is approved, we will do that again at the site plan stage. So what the applicant has provided to you is, if this is satisfactory to you, a comparison between what is vested now versus what they're proposed as far as traffic generation, generation of trips. And the applicant can provide more testimony on that of how they, what that methodology was. They also provided to us a comprehensive traffic study, which has been, I think we went through three iterations, and we also have a supplement that was provided to us. It was evaluated, all of those were evaluated by our staff. According to the traffic study, the project has the potential to generate 1,400 average daily trips. The traffic study did not recommend a southbound right turn lane, and there's no significant impact to Wendover Way. And that was also confirmed. That was also confirmed by our traffic engineer. Further down on the, on that same page, 436 of your packet, again, we just made a statement about transportation concurrency. We will have to evaluate it again specifically at site plan stage. As far as the access question, on page, page 443 of your packet. So again, staff believes that the, what, the evidence that was provided to us, that the planned development will not create or generate traffic along local streets. Now, the council needs to be asked whether that is sufficient enough to address this particular standard, a standard that has been brought up several times as far as access Later on, under that PD criteria, there's compatibility and open space and height. Open space on page 444 of your packet, we've addressed that. The applicant has satisfied the open space criteria for the PD zoning district. Height, page 445, there's been some concern about whether the 50-foot high structures, four-story structures is compatible with the neighborhood. We believe that the structures are far enough away from other residential structures to be compatible.
Guys, let him talk.
Page 445 of your packet, you will see a reference, again, back to, it's on the bottom of your page under number 14, a reference back to those plan unit development land use element policy, land use category policies. Specifically, 1.19, 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 10, those are the enhancement language policies. We state, although the master plan could better address plan unit development, future land use settlement policies, which I've already stated, to encourage creative approaches in housing development, types and styles, interesting streetscapes, architectural styles, and a mixture of uses, the PD rezoning conditions are consistent with the planning and development land use designation, section 33.3 and 33.8. Again, you'll need to make a determination as to whether what they're providing to you is exceeding above, beyond those particular policies that I've stated here for consistency with the comprehensive plan. On page 446, just going to be an example of some of the conditions we're going to suggest if this goes forward. We've recommended a bicycle parking structure to shelter bicycles for the long-term storage for the residents. On page 448, in addition to comprehensive plan criteria, rezoning criteria, PD criteria, the code also asks us to address criteria related to a master plan review. So we try to address each of those here. The biggest one, I think, is going to be about concurrency. And again, that will be specifically addressed during the site plan stage. So if it can't meet concurrency, even though this is approved, this may be approved and you have a master plan that's governing on the property, that's the zoning district with conditions, they still have to get a site plan approved by the city. So like any other project, it has to go through that process and if it can't meet concurrency, then it can't be approved. On page 449 of your packet begins our findings. I'm just going to summarize those. The comprehensive plan text requirement will limit the residential density to a scale that is appropriate to the surrounding residential land uses. The rezoning and master plan are generally consistent with the plan unit development comprehensive plan land use category and the land regulations, including PD rezoning criteria. We don't see any adverse impacts to State Road 50, Wendover Way. And again, you need to see that staff comment on page 10 of the staff report. For references to the rezoning traffic impact analysis and traffic study. A variety of housing options are needed to accommodate the desires of residents, including rental apartments. So those are the things that we found generally to be consistent and to help support this application. Things that we've, based on the application and the evidence that was provided to us that we thought might be questionable. The current commercial high intensity future land use and the regional commercial zoning district were approved in 2008 with a binding concept plan for commercial development. The city has less than 20% of combined commercial industrial land use categories. The amendment will continue to reduce the cumulative acreage of non-residential land use categories in the city. The only reason we suggest, we even stated that 20% is because that was a quantity that we actually had, and that just only came out of the live local ordinance analysis that we did. So it was the only metric that we had available, so we decided to include that to say that this is what we have available to tell you. This is the quantity of actual commercial industrial we have in the city. So as part of your legislative decision-making, if you decide that this is not appropriate to continue to reduce that, then this would have to be denied. A master plan could better,
Brad, hold up, Brad, Brad, say that last sentence again for me.
If you decide that the, you do not want to see a reduction in the cumulative area of your commercial and industrial in your city, the best metric, the only metric we can give you is that 20% analysis that was generated last year. If you decide that this is not appropriate to continue to reduce that, then this application would need to be denied.
Thank you.
The master plan could better address the plan unit development, future land use policies that I've identified, the 1.19, 1, 3, 5, enhancement language. A market demand analysis, economic impact analysis, or fiscal impact analysis was not submitted. The applicant did provide some information to help address that. They also, the applicant also did try to provide some, did provide a report yesterday to us to help address the policies that I mentioned about that enhancement language. The staff has not had an opportunity to review that information and provide our own analysis of that. So that, I believe, was just distributed to you. The city's existing residential land use designations and approved or proposed multifamily apartments developments can accommodate the projected new population growth. What we're referring to there is that we have existing residential, especially high density and medium density residential land use categories throughout the city that can accommodate where we believe that growth will hap, that growth will come to the city, that we do have places for that. Whether those places are appropriate or can accommodate actual development, we don't know that until an actual site plan is approved. The applicant did not provide specific information that demonstrates how the project protects, the health, safety, and welfare to a greater extent than the standard code. The applicant did provide to us a report, which again, was distributed to you yesterday. I'm just going to highlight or just point out some of the exhibits. On page 451 of your packet is the aerial, so give you some orientation as to where this property is in relation to the other properties. And you can see that this property is a 25-acre lot that is, or parcel, rather, that is on the west side of Wendover Way, east of 95, north of a large lake, and south of another property that's currently commercial. The future land use map is on page 452 of your packet, and you can see the existing future land use versus what would be created after, if this is approved. So the entire property will be a planned unit development land use category. Again, a tailored-made land use. And then on the zoning, on page 453, again, you'll see the same thing. All the various zoning districts on this property that were created back in 2008 and prior, that are currently regional commercial and that sliver of property on the bottom of it that has OR zoning, open space recreation zoning, all of that will be changed to the planned development zoning with the conditions of master plan. The application is on page 462. The applicant provided an environmental report on page 479 of your packet. We highlighted some of that inside our staff report. A transportation land use analysis, which I referenced before earlier, is on page 491 of your packet. The master plan is on page 493. I'm just going to briefly describe what that shows. You will see the, on page 493 of your packet, you'll see areas that are shaded in green and blue and gray, and then there's a hatched area in the bottom part of that property. That's the existing wetland, and that'll be, continue to be a wetland, according to the conditions of the PD. The blue area, I'm sorry, I have to zoom in on this. The blue area is, was identified by the applicant as open space, passive recreation, totaling six and a half acres, and the green area is identified by the applicant as open space, active recreation, totaling 2.8 acres. And then there will be a stormwater pond, it looks like, on the east side of this property. The land use map amendment ordinance is on page 496 of your packet. The PD rezoning ordinance is on page 500 of your packet. The conditions of that PD rezoning ordinance are on page 502, 502 of your packet, and I'm just going to highlight a few of those conditions. So if this is approved, this PD rezoning ordinance will govern this property and help implement this master plan. So you can see on page 502, "The list of permitted uses will be limited to multifamily residential dwelling, clubhouse, active recreation facilities, and some detached accessory structures, such as carports and garages." On page 503 of your packet, you'll see some additional conditions and descriptions that will help govern this property if this rezoning ordinance is approved. If any of these conditions need to be changed, they will have to go through an amendment to the, to the process, which means it has to go through a public hearing back before you again. The building height, on page 503, we wanted to clarify because the applicant proposed a different definition of how height would be determined on this property. We wanted to make sure that the city's height definition would be utilized, so we've incorporated that into the ordinance. On page 504 of your packet are the conditions related to access and roadways. We are stating here under page 504, under section 1.9A of that PD rezoning ordinance, "A maximum of two vehicular access points may be granted." That doesn't necessarily mean that one of them has to be an emergency access. That is something, if the applicant wants to do that, that is up to them. And we'll review that during the site plan stage. The location of parking areas, number of spaces can be, are illustrated and can be moved during the site plan stage. So when they submit to us a site plan and if it's not 100% consistent with the master plan, that won't be an issue. Pedestrian circulation plan illustrating all sidewalks, crosswalks, that would have to be provided to us during the site plan stage. Bike lanes, shared bike lane markings with approved signage on Wendover Way to Cheney or construct an alternative dedicated bicycle path to an existing bicycle facility. This is something we're leaving to the applicant to propose, there's three options there, during the site plan stage. A bicycle shelter, which I've already mentioned. And then at the bottom on page 504, you will see amendment procedures, and that's just really mimicking what's already in the code as far as how this can be amended. The applicant did provide to us a school report. The school board did not see a currency issue. Traffic study is on page 55, I'm sorry, the school report's on page 507 of your packet, traffic study's on 515. And the applicant did provide to us a business impact estimate, which is on page 737 of your packet. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Mr. Stokel, did you have a question before?
I have a few. Brad, can you clarify what is required with PD zoning in terms of if there's a public use component, how much open space is required?
In the code, the open space criteria for a planned development zoning states, "Common open space includes both passive recreation, for example, picnic areas or walking trails, and active recreation, for example, playgrounds or basketball courts, areas, private water bodies or stormwater retention or detention areas that are designed to be used for passive recreation, i.e., improved with fountains, benches, and walkways may be counted towards the common open space minimum requirement." The applicant on page 493 of your packet, they have, that's the master plan. And you can see what they've incorporated or proposed as open space and the amenities that will be included in there. And some examples of that are...
Is there a minimum open space requirement for...
Oh, excuse me, yes, it's 35%.
And did the applicant say why they went with PD versus trying to get it changed to like high density or something more intense? If not, I can ask the applicant that one.
The applicant would probably be better able to answer that question.
Okay. And then this is being proposed as six buildings, or six four-story buildings for a total of 304 units. Do we know if this were to potentially be a live local project, how many stories in units it would, it could be developed under live local?
Under the live local law and our city's ordinance, the height is determined by the state law. We've incorporated our ordinance, identify which zoning districts would qualify underneath that land, that law. This property is commercially zoned, has commercial, regional commercial zoning, which does not have a height restriction. However, height or setbacks have to be increased if you put, if you build a height, a building that's hired from 35 feet taller, every foot taller, the setback has to be increased. So if a live local, if a project is, that qualifies for live local is going to be proposed and can be approved on this property without rezoning, they have to meet those standards.
But those increased setbacks could potentially go toward like an open space requirement? Would that be fair to say?
The live local law, ordinance that the city has, does require some kind of recreational or open space component.
Okay.
Yes, it could.
Okay, so pending, it could go at least 35 feet and then increasing your setback, you could go up to the 50 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know how many maximum units potentially could be there? Does, I guess, does live local under our code that we passed, is it the same 35% open space or is it less than that?
It's 20%.
20% open space.
In the, in the other cities, live local ordinance, the urban village zoning district, open space requirements were incorporated in that, and that's 20%. The, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you may not be able to answer this. Is it fair to say that under live local, potentially more units could be developed in this piece of property?
Yes. So the law requires us to allow the maximum density the city allows to be on, if the project is a qualified live local project. So that would be 40 units per acre in the city of Todditsville.
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done. My other question I had is in, and I've said this, I think, before, I know we're probably going to hear a lot of comments on traffic. What I've said prior and at the first reading is, to me, this is, and even just seeing the staff report, we're making a land use decision. And so right now, it's commercial, do we want to switch it over to a PD? We're going to have traffic there regardless. So I know there's going to be traffic comments made, but for me, it's the land use. What type of traffic, what type of land use should be there? And you guys know I always bring my map. Brad, do you know if there is any type of best practice for ratio of residential to commercial, ideally for cities and municipalities? I know we have less than the 20%, but is like 20% best practice? Is that just the minimum commercial? Again, that, one of my issues, I always say, is I'm really concerned about losing our commercial space. And so I don't know if you, with Planning Association or anything, if they discuss that to say, hey, when you're developing your city, please try to stay within this range of ratio from residential to commercial.
There's no range that I'm aware of that has been espoused by APA or other planning associations, but I have heard and have read, and we've all been taught that if your city is one land use dominant, that can hurt the city.
Okay.
So a city that is dominant, single-family zoning is, that is the market, basically. Whereas if you have a mixture of different types of uses, then that allows you to have a more diverse economy.
Okay. And then my last question, and I think you mentioned it, if we were to potentially propose any changes, such as maybe a reduction in the height for this project, can we do that tonight or would that have to go to, will we table and go to another hearing? What would that look like?
You can compose conditions on there that are...
We could do that tonight?
Yeah, that are relevant, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just one question she may have asked, for right now, is, explain to us this, the change that would happen on the 20% rule under the live local. You said it would affect that, the 20%?
No, we just threw that metric in there because that was the only one we have. No, we just threw that metric in there because that was the only one we have. Last year, that was a metric that was generated as a necessity out of developing, trying to address how we would implement, excuse me, the live local law. So the live local law says that if your community has a cumulative area of commercial industrially areas that are less than 20%, then a live local qualifying project has to include a mixed-use component. And we fall in that category because the cumulative area that we identified last year when we were developing that ordinance is less than 20% of commercial industrial lands.
All right. And if we approve this, how does that affect other live local projects that may be in our...
It won't. It would, it just, it would reduce that number further, and any live local application that we receive will have to include a mixed-use component as part of that development.
Is my two finish?
Member Nelson.
So if it was a hotel as opposed to a live local community, would the same height restrictions apply, where you'd have a greater setback for a higher building?
Depends on the zoning district. So in this zoning, this, on a hotel, it's not permitted in this zoning district.
Okay.
But commercial, big box stores, retail offices, you can have that in there. And you can go up to, you know, it doesn't have a height limitation. It just says that that particular project would now have to increase its setbacks accordingly and continue to do that.
And the other question I had was, there was an issue of, there's an easement there. Why not put a road to 50 along that easement? Would DOT allow that?
The applicant did...
It is to 95.
The applicant provided some information to us related to that. I think they'd be able to be best to provide testimony on that. But yes, we are aware of an easement going through the property to the north. At the site plan stage, we'll ask, is that feasible? Is that a possibility? Is that another access point?
Okay. Okay.
Member Cole.
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand, if live local goes there, it would have to be a mixture of housing and commercial. Is that true?
One of the uses that are listed as permitted or allowed, basically, in that underlying zoning district. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Vice Mayor.
One more, and again, I'll have more. Brad, can you guess how many, if we left it commercial, if we wanted to stay commercial, how many additional, I know it's all dependent on the destruction, construction and what it is. It would be possible to have more egress onto 405 if it would be commercial rather than doing what we are, what the applicant is asking for us to do. Is that correct? In other words, if we put a bunch of retail stores and warehouses and we could, we could have more onzids on to 405 than we would have if we just put this, 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 this construction or this project in there, right? Because we could kind of manipulate roads and streets all through the commercial area and still have exits on to 405 versus just only having two exits or egress on, one on 50 and one at the light that goes between Home Depot and Walmart.
I believe you're referring to what the entitlement is on the property that, as we see it. There is a governing concept plan, which, when we looked at it, had several driveways. But all that has to be vetted through the site plan process. So when they provide to us a site plan, if they'd go forward with the current zoning and the current concept plan, we review that site plan to see if all of that can really work. And so there may be, some of those proposed access points might not be approved as a result. So that, that concept is just that. It's allowed for, basically, as a proposal.
Thank you.
All right. Staff, you are complete, yes?
Yes.
Okay. We move on to the applicant, I do believe. And I would just ask that as the applicant speaks, we do our very best not to put our emphasis in there where we feel like it. Thank you. Appreciate it. We move forward because we have plenty of cards. They're available, get their chance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Cole Oliver, on behalf of Bristol Development. First, going to take a moment to thank staff for their hard work. They put a lot of time into this. I know that they're probably tired of hearing from me and most likely some others as well. So thank you for the hard work. I will have some questions and, you know, ask Brad and staff for some help as we clarify a couple of points moving forward. Then I'll take a couple of minutes to lay out the history of this site, how we, as developers and the city and Windover Farms, how did we end up in this situation where we are today? And then after that, I'm going to introduce the developers and let them explain their project, their apartments, their development style to you all as we move through the PUD. And then we have our engineer here who can answer any technical questions on the engineering side and maybe explain some of the height and line of sight concerns that will be raised. And then finally, we have three experts that I'm going to ask you all to qualify. One will be an expert on real estate and valuations. One will be our land planner, and the final will be our traffic engineer. And those will all take separate votes from you all once they provide their qualifications as to whether you all would deem them as experts sufficient to testify in those matters. So, you know, first and foremost, a little bit of history on this site. This site has been owned by the current developer for over 40 years, our current owner, for over 40 years, working with the city throughout its inception. And back in 1995, this, the landowner donated to the city an easement for the placement of its sewer and reuse lines to traverse the property to go underneath I-95 and tie into the sewer plant there. That's in the official record book, 3460, page 3112. I'll be submitting this into the record as we move forward. It's, one of the conditions of that easement is that, quote, "In the event grantor's proposed future development of the property requires relocation of such lines, grantee, the city, shall at its sole cost and expense relocate the lines to another portion of grantor's property that does not interfere with the grantor's proposed development." That'll become more important as we move into the benefits of this PUD application as opposed to the prior plan that was presented in 2008 and, you know, anything else that may come along in the future if this plan's not presented. I don't know how you guys want me to put it into evidence, if, just hand it to the clerk or... So what we're going to show you now is moving down the timeframe from 1995, when the easement was put in place, and then in 2008, a concept plan by a person who had both this project, this property and the property to the north owned by Mr. Donnell under contract, presented to the city a concept plan for this commercial development as a condition of changing it from a combination of the existing tourist and conservation land use to the present-day regional commercial. And as you can see, this concept, one, it covers two different people's properties. So at the time, that developer had both pieces of contract, or both pieces of property under contract and presented a plan to the city. Today, those owners are not cooperating together. No one has those whereby anyone could do this plan because in order for us to do this complete plan, we would have to have the other property landowner's permission, and for him to develop his property, he would have to have our permission. So we're kind of stuck. And with this concept plan from 2008, and that's a function of the city's ordinance that, long and the short of it, I'll, you know, let staff correct me if I'm wrong, but if you present a concept plan at a reading, it becomes a binding plan upon the property. As you'll see in this concept brand and, concept plan, and Brad is correct, that it does show a number of access points to the property, one being a write-in only off of State Road 50, an approximate location of the existing apron of the old truck stop that Mr. Donnell owned at that location. In addition, it shows four cuts on to Windover Farms, one of them being for the semi-tractor trailer trucks that would need to come in and out to service the proposed box development and other facilities there. You know, one other thing to note on this concept plan, again, your planner is correct, is a concept plan, it would have to go through full site plan and engineering. And just off the top of it, this concept plan, there's no way to move the water from the north to the south where the retention and treatment ponds are without relocating those city sewer and reuse lines, which, again, would be at the city's expense per the easement that's been recorded. One of the benefits that you'll see with the PD that is being proposed, that we're proposing leaving those lines in place, that the city would never have to move them. You guys could if you chose to, but you wouldn't have to by operation of the easement. So again, the world ran into a hiccup after 2008, 2009, known as the Great Recession. The developer who was proposing this project dropped the contract, and it hasn't moved forward. With this binding site plan in place, anything to get done on this property has to come before this body for a rezoning hearing, no matter what, anything at all. Whether it's for our property or for Mr. Donnell's property, it can't be developed. That greatly decreases the marketability of a property or the desire for someone to want to come in and, you know, spend the whole evening listening to the concerns that will be raised. And when I stated earlier that we all found ourselves in this position, that's not really great. And that's a function of, one, a 2008 plan that's being held up 16 years later, may not be proper this day and age. I personally don't feel it is, but that's my opinion. I don't get to vote on the matter. But what we, the other unfortunate situation is that we are dealing with two municipalities here, municipality and a county. So we've got Titusville, who has a desire, or at least their future land use plan shows this as high-intensity commercial, and the future land use plan says we want this developed as future, in the future, as high-intensity commercial development, which is the future land use, which is the most intense development allowed in the city. Directly south of this is the Windover Farms neighborhood, which is a collection of single-family homes. And so we have this situation, which is not optimal in the land use patterns, and our experts will address this, when you have, that's such a hard transition, where you're going from high-intensity commercial directly to single-family. But, you know, that's not a function of anything that you've done or we've done. That's just the way the property develops when you've got two different entities that are regulating it next to each other. We feel that the PUD that we're bringing forward is a reduction from the high-intensity zoning, but it's not the single-family neighborhood. So our view is meeting into the middle. And again, Commissioner or Councilwoman Stokel, you asked the question of how did we end up with the PD plan that's being presented as opposed to some of the other options, probably high-density residential being the other option that would be on the table? And, and that is a function of the fact that we've met with the Windover Farms folks three separate times. The first time was an unofficial meeting with the HOA president and a couple of the members. And at that time, the developer had a very different site plan to what was being proposed. We met with the individuals, listened to their concerns, and the primary concerns raised there were the height of the buildings and the proximity to Windover Way on that design, the traffic concerns, which, you know, we'll hear a lot about tonight, the concern of a bait and switch, if this, if you're going in for high-density residential, you might do something else, and the concerns that, hey, we have our own private park back in our neighborhood, and we don't want, you know, the individuals living in this, this development going back to their park that is owned by their HOA. And so in order to address that and the concerns on the density, which as high-density residential is 15 units per acre, we're proposing 11.7, the PUD allows 12, we decided to come in with the PUD. And, you know, one, what the PUD does with a master plan is it locks in the site plan. That is what it's going to be. We can't, we can't really move the buildings around. We can't do anything different. It locks in the density where it's going to be. The developer added in a lot of the amenities, including their own dog parks and other recreational facilities, to try to take away the concern as to the neighborhood being overwhelmed with the residents of, of this development. And so after a lot of time and expense, the developer has presented the plan that they have now, and that was reducing the density down. And, you know, full, you know, disclosure that the R3 district has a height limitation of 35. We don't dispute that. But this would allow us the 50-foot, which is consistent with the allowable height, which, as your planner has stated correctly, there is no upper height limit in the RC or tourist or other neighborhood, or commercial districts, other than what you can fit within the setbacks allowed. And so the developer has maximized moving the apartments as far off of Windover Way as they can, as close to 95, while maintaining the buffer of the existing mature landscaping along Windover Way and the other property boundaries. So that was a long way of saying that's how we got there. So, you know, with, with that, what I would like to do is move into our presentation and introduce you all to the Windover Farms, or, excuse me, to the Bristol Development team, and let them show you their, their experience in the development world with the apartments, why they chose Titusville, the project that they're wanting to do. And, you know, I may ask them a couple of questions before we let them sit down, and then we'll kind of try to move through as quickly as we can, unless you all have any questions at this time.
I see none of this.
Wait, I have one, sorry.
Do I do?
Sorry, it might take a little bit. Just to follow up with your answer, thank you for that. So even though, like, the R3 would have had a reduction and you would have less height requirement, you still could have put more units, though?
That's my reading of it, yes.
Okay. Because I feel like there would not be as much open space requirement, would be one thing. Okay, thank you.
I defer to the planner on the R3 zoning district. I don't believe it has any set open space requirement.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
And we also, as we'll get into later, as to the, how this PUD or PD zoning district benefits more than the existing zoning districts that the city has, we'll talk some more on the open space and setbacks and that type of issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce you all to David Hantrow and Glenn Bartosz and the Bristol Development team.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Diesel.
Good morning.
I'm the council. I'm David Hantrow with Bristol Development, and it's great to be here. Bristol is based in Franklin, Tennessee, although we have been active developers in seven states, including Florida, where we are actively developing right now in Jacksonville and up in Walton County at Santa Rosa Beach, as well as pursuing other projects throughout Florida, including Titusville. We started looking at this site three years ago, and we liked Titusville, we liked what we saw. Bristol builds communities to the highest quality. We are very resident-focused. We like to build heavily amenitized communities, like Cole said. We have dog parks, we have pools, we have outdoor kitchens in our, in our communities, our clubhouses. We provide fitness facilities, we provide gift-wrapping stations, we provide a lot of things that are unique and will be new to the Titusville market. We use professional onsite management. If you live in a Bristol community, you will be well-vetted before you get to move in. You will have an employment verification, an income verification, a criminal background check. We're going to know who our residents are before they move in. You know, anybody can buy a single-family home if they have money, and they'll never get vetted by the neighborhood. But if you live in a Bristol community, you will be well-vetted. We, we really liked Titusville when we first came here. We commissioned a market study last year to make sure that our, our gut instincts were correct, and I want to just read a couple of sections out of that market study. Titusville is poised to capture... "Titusville is poised to capture the next wave of economic and demographic, demographic growth with land and infrastructure available to accommodate the influx of new households. Rental housing is highly desirable as it provides a quality living environment to households that may not seek homeownership. These include workers on a contractual assignment for three to five years, young STEM professionals not desiring homeownership, and mature residents electing the maintenance-free lifestyle offered through rental. Based on the economic and demographic analysis conducted, there is market support and long-term sustainability for a high-quality rental property such as the proposed subject. The addition of the subject will not create an oversupplied or overall soft housing market." So when we saw that, when we saw the information, we, we really felt like we should proceed with this, with this community. You know, we, we like to do things that are unique, as I said, in this community, given the, given the new interest in electronic, in electric vehicles, we're going to be providing electric vehicle charging stations onsite. We do energy-efficient appliances. We try to do things that make the resident experience as positive as possible. I want to point out one thing in this site plan, which you'll see, we are 60% one-bedrooms. Based on our market research, we feel that was what we needed to do. We're 60, we'll have ones, twos, and three-bedroom apartments, but we are 60% one-bedrooms, which means 180 of the units will, will probably have one resident in them. And I know a, a lot of the people who have been critiquing our project at Windover Farms would have you believe we're going to have 600 or more cars in this community. The reality of it is, we typically have one person per bedroom or less. So at most, if we had one car per bedroom, we'd only have about 408 cars in the community. So I think, I think that's important to note as, as the traffic issues get brought up. I think, let's just check my notes and see if there's anything else. You know, the, the final thing about our residents, we have a very diverse resident profile. We have young people, we have retirees, everything in between. We have a lot of entrepreneurs that live in our communities, you know, throughout the southeast. We're not a bunch of eight-to-fivers, i.e., it's not everybody leaving at 8:00 a.m. and coming home at 5:00 a.m. We have a lot of people that work from home, we have a lot of people that travel. It, it's a very diverse bunch. It's not, you know, 304 units worth of traffic at 8:00 and back at 5:00. So I think that's important to note as well. We appreciate being able to work with Brad and the staff, and everybody has been, has been very helpful, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on this project.
Thank you. Before you sit down, could you address the expected capital investment of the project?
Yeah, absolutely. We think that this project will be investing over $70 million into, into this project into Titusville. That will consist of a construction loan from one of our, one of our lenders that we work with a lot, as well as equity investment of probably $30 million or more dollars. So it's going to be substantial, and we estimate the property taxes that this community will generate will probably be between $750,000 and $850,000 in total.
So what, what we have here on the screen is that, is the master site plan that has been submitted to staff for approval, and I don't know if you guys have it on your computers and can see it, or you have to look at, look at it up here, but that's the layout. The green is kind of the larger open space, and the blues also are part of our open space as well. What you'll see in the next couple of slides is what these amenities entail, both in the park area as well as the more passive walking trails that were around the, you know, the treatment and retention areas with the associated fountains and other items that'll be in there.
One other thing I want to point out, I just remembered, all of our buildings are elevated. As I mentioned, you know, we, our resident profile runs the gamut from young people to retirees. Having elevators in all of our building allow more people, you know, who might be mobility-challenged to live on the fourth floor if they want to. They don't have to live on just the fourth floor. Most of the apartments in Titusville just have stairs. They don't have, they don't have elevators, except for a few. But we think that having elevators in all of our buildings just makes it that more resident-friendly.
So this is the, the concept amenity areas highlighted here, which you'll see is there's the swimming pool, the amenity fitness center, a dog park, the pickleball courts, a lot of the passive open lawn areas, barbecue stuff. So this is a little zoomed in here, a little bit more of the main park area, showing, you know, what we're proposing to put in here. And this is the architectural design of the clubhouse area, the style, et cetera. And then we're going to give you a couple of quick pictures of, this is, you know, the concept fitness centers that you heard talking about, the pools. It's kind of an aerial of what the pool should look like, the covered seating areas and barbecue grills that are shown on the plan. I'm not sure where I'm supposed to be pointing this thing to make it work. More of the clubhouse amenities. We've talked about the barbecue areas, the fire pits, the fountains.
And heavy landscaping.
The heavy landscaping that goes in there, which will meet RXC all of the codes that the city has. And then just because I like the doggy photo to show the, the dog park.
Not just a dog park, a dog spa, where you can wash your dog and he can run a treadmill.
Here is the, the renderings of what the apartment buildings themselves are proposed to look like. This would be looking from, you know, one of the treatment retention areas towards the buildings with the native vegetation and the other low-impact development criteria that we're going to try to accomplish, to provide with the project during site plan review. Here's the typical interior finishes of the units with the efficient appliances.
Stainless steel.
Stainless steel, and this, I don't know if this is a one-bedroom or not, but the balcony view is over the, the site, and so.
I would encourage you all to check out our website at bristledevelopment.com, and if you're ever in Jacksonville or in Santa Rosa Beach or any other city and would like to visit one of our communities, you're absolutely welcome to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have our engineer, Reed Tomless, pardon me, Reed Thomas with Kimley Horn, who will present a little bit here on the, again, that's the master plan we've already gone through. I think, Reed, you have some exhibits on the additional amenities, workout stations, et cetera.
There's just a PowerPoint.
You were going to pass out related to the amenities along the walking trails, et cetera.
Hold on, I got it.
Apologies, trying to get this into staff so they had time to make sure the presentation didn't have any of the nasty stuff. We didn't have time to incorporate these.
I was trying to find it on my thing. Thank you. Yeah, I should have been on the PowerPoint all along.
With him passing those out, I will turn the microphone over to him to discuss some of the amenities around the walking trails and the other open space areas, as well as to address some of the engineering on the line of site and height concerns, which will be brought up.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Reed Thomas, professional engineer, civil engineer for the project. And in the existing site conditions today, there are two existing stormwater facilities. To limit some of the disturbances that this development will cause, we're going to utilize those existing pond footprints, ultimately enhance them to make sure that our proposed development works. You can see that right here and right here. To kind of bring those into the community, to make sure that the residents can actually utilize those areas as well, we're incorporating some fountains, as you can see here, as well as walking trails that will circulate the entire facilities. Along those facilities, we're anticipating some workout facilities, some park benches that will be heavily landscaped, really to kind of bring them into the community, not to where they're just offset, to where residents ultimately can't utilize those areas. So there'll be all opportunities for residents to go, you know, look out over the wetland area, see the wildlife, have lunch. Then to get into the line of site, throughout the process of this site, there have been several iterations that we've worked through. Really what we wanted to do was to find a best site plan that kind of really incorporated the site and pushed the buildings internal to get enough buffering and screening from the adjacent properties as well as to Windover Way. As you can see, I think the minimal building is approximately 330 feet from Windover Way. Ultimately, that was just to satisfy some of the concerns about line of sight that the residents of Windover Farms have. As they look into the site, we're going to try to, you know, utilize as much existing vegetation as possible. That includes a lot of the very mature trees located along Windover Way that I would say approximately 30, 40, 50 feet tall. It ultimately provides screening, buffering to the internal buildings. We've provided a, kind of a line of sight diagram here that kind of determines that. So as you can see here, this is the closest single-family, the single-family home that is located to our development. Right here is Windover Way.
So you're going to need to talk into the microphone?
Oh, microphone.
Apologies.
Turn it more. You can get it over there. There you go.
So as you can see here, this is the closest single-family home that is located nearest to our development, as well as the property line here, the clubhouse, which is offset approximately 75 feet from the property line, and then the nearest multifamily four-story building that is located about 325 feet from our property line. To kind of give you a replica, a replication of what is anticipated for line of sight, you can see here with this red line here, if there is a resident standing in a single-family home with the existing vegetation, as well as proposed trees that we won't be incorporating to make sure that we're meeting all landscape buffer requirements, this red line kind of just, should approximately display the line of sight, which is clearly over the 50-foot building. In addition, we also wanted to provide a replication of what is anticipated for someone that lives on the fourth floor. That can be seen with this blue line here, and as you can see with the existing vegetation, as well as any additional proposed plantings, we can see they will clearly have line of sight that will not hinder this adjacent single-family home.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our civil engineer at this time on that?
I don't see any, no sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, Richard just stepped out, but as we discussed before, now we're going to tender three different expert witnesses for the council's approval. That requires the qualifications of the experts to be presented to the council, and the council will have to take a vote on whether they feel that that individual qualifies for an expert for the purposes of which they're being presented. Our first will be our real estate expert. It's Mr. Jason Steele, and I will let him present his qualifications, and then upon the end of that, if you guys have any questions for him on his qualifications, and then I would ask for a vote to qualify him as an expert.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Cole. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've been a commercial real estate broker for over 50 years. I've sold probably over $100 million in commercial properties and have been participating in real estate things all over the state. I've been a senior real estate instructor for the Florida Realtors for over 20 years. I served as a Florida real estate commissioner under two governors for eight years, under Governor Martinez for four, and under Governor Childs for four. In 2004, Governor Jeb Bush appointed me to be the director of the Division of Real Estate for the entire state of Florida. I headed up all of the licensees and the appraisers, and I had staff of investigators and lawyers to get involved in all of the misgivings in Florida real estate. I've been an expert witness since 1990. I've served, I've never been disqualified by the federal court or a circuit court, and I've testified at numerous matters on, on, on real estate issues, including land use and, and standards of practice and a variety of things, and I've never been disqualified as an expert witness. There's much more, but that was a short version.
You know, with that, I would ask, if we could get a motion to accept him as an expert in Real Estate Matters.
We lost a attorney.
Yeah, what Mr. Oliver said is the, the process, yes. You will, you will take the expert's credentials and vote on him being qualified as an expert or not.
All right, Member Nelson.
I would accept Mr. Steele as an expert in real estate, land use, and standards for real estate.
Second.
Correct.
Hold on, before I go there, remember, did you want to say something previous?
Oh, no, okay.
Thought so. I lost my mic. Okay, I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Passes. All right, next one? Thank you very much for accepting me as an expert. I had to kind of laugh a little bit when I first took this, because it's extremely unusual for a, it's normally that you have a multifamily piece of property that's being changed to commercial. And then, because commercial is so much more intense than multifamily. So when I was asked by Cole to do this, I thought, well, this is going to be easy. Well, it's not easy, but I'll tell you how I came to my opinion, because I think it's very important. I did a variety of different things. Of course, I reviewed the existing zonings in the area. Of course, I drove the site, drove all the traffic areas. I interviewed the owner, and, and I listened to the planning and zoning meeting. I read the staff report. I listened to staff comments and read the market study and the traffic study and the economic impact study. In addition to that, I wanted to address some of the things that I heard from you wonderful folks. Ms. Stokel had asked about, you know, that she felt that the commercial area needed to be there, and that, that was something that was important to her. The mayor said that what was important to him was traffic. Joe Lynn said she had a variety of different issues in regards to all of the things that, that were going on, and that she thought it would be important for us to testify today in regards to those things. So I wanted to, instead of me telling you about, let's talk about Ms. Stokel's point first, the commercial property. This is from a gentleman that I've worked with for over 20 years. He's got 12 million square feet of space. He has been involved in real estate commercial in 10 different states. And I asked Mr. Sterns, his name is Bob Sterns, he's from Sinner Investment, I asked him to look at this site. And he looked at the site, and basically he said, "Dear Jason, I've looked at and analyzed the property on the southeast corner of I-95 and Highway 50, and find it unacceptable for an A-grade shopping center. The issues are many, specifically the two 24-inch sewer lines that the city owns that runs through the property. They would absolutely have to be removed, and that's the city's expense. In addition, the access to the site is not good, and the visibility is non-existent. In addition to all those issues, the traffic congestion will be a problem, and if a shopping center is ever built, it would create major bottlenecks and ingress and egress congestion problems. I do not believe any national tenant would look at this site and rent there. In my opinion, if a developer entered the real estate of the center, would not have major retailers of any large size to, to participate in this commercial property. Most likely, what it would end up to be is a strip center, or maybe a gas station, with maybe one fast food site. That is probably not even realistic, because the site really is not good for commercial Not something the city should use in, in a prime housing area, according to Mr. Stern, he said sincerely, Bob Sterns." Now, I can tell you that I drove Mr. Sterns by that site, and didn't tell him what my participation was in it at all. He thought I was a real estate broker trying to sell him the site. I let that go for a while, and before I came tonight, I asked him to put in, I asked him what he thought of the property, because- I asked him what he thought of the property because I never really asked him before. And I can tell you that, that tells me that this property will sit for a long, long time, specifically if it's commercial. Now, I want to talk to you about the economic benefits of this property and, and what's important to talk about in regards to that. First of all, I went to the property appraiser, looked at all of that, I looked at the, looked at all of the things that needed to be looked at to come up with the details, and I'm gonna give you some approximate numbers in regards to the benefits. Well, number one, if this property, uh, project goes through, there'll be no need for the city to relocate the utility lines, saving an estimate of about three to six million dollars. The result's in the approximate seventy million dollar capital improvement to the city. The developers are gonna put seventy million dollars into the economy of this city. Now, let's talk about the ad valorem tax revenues. And before I do that, I really want to just briefly say that one of the things that I did discover was there was a master plan on the site. And as a result of that master plan, no matter what happens, we would have, if this doesn't go through tonight, would have to go through this whole same process again, which could mean years. And of course, all of these people will show up in every one of these things, and they have the right to do that. But what happens is, is that you're sitting there with a piece of property that gives you six thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents a year. Now, you've heard Mr. Hantroe say that the approximate value of the ad valorem taxes is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's not far off. We can't exactly know what that's gonna be until the, the project's done. But what does a city get from that? Right now, they're getting sixty-two hundred dollars. If I'm not mistaken, the city gets about thirty-five percent of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you're not getting right now. And I can tell you with the economy and the growth that's going on, you're gonna need every penny you can get. So if this property sits any longer, it's just gonna be a burden on the city. For comparison of commercial properties in the neighborhood, you get about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Home Depot, a hundred and eighteen thousand, Target, a hundred and forty-two thousand, Lowe's, a hundred and forty thousand, Walmart, two hundred and twenty thousand, that equals about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If this project goes through, I just told you that you'll be getting approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the proposed master plan would do a, a variety of different things. First of all, this will not have a negative effect on the values of the neighborhood. Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate if you would, uh, we're gonna respect.
I got you.
Their odds, and I would appreciate no comments from the audience.
I don't hear comments.
Thank you very much. Now, first of all, any commercial property affects the, the ad valorem taxes and the value of the properties in the surrounding areas. And they do it for a variety of reasons. One is the traffic. The other one is the light. The other one is the noise. And that continues to go on, but the biggest one is the traffic. And if you think the traffic's bad now, our traffic engineer will tell you what the traffic's gonna be like once, once the, uh, a, a, a shopping center would go into the site. So if developed, the commercial traffic, traffic and safety delays would be much worse. So I want to just address a couple more things real quickly. And, and one is, is that I actually sat on EDC and Space Florida and Enterprise Florida, so I know what's coming. And what's coming, the study that the county, that city used was in two thousand and eighteen. And their study said that you had enough property for residential property up till the year two thousand and thirty. And I understand why they use that, and that's fine, but they're forgetting a couple of different things. First of all, it's two thousand and twenty-four. Second of all, we had COVID. And third of all, we didn't have the economic boom that we have right now. So the multifamily property and the single family property needs to be enhanced as fast as we can. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now, I know from a variety of different things that we have thousands of jobs coming to Titusville. We have more going on in Titusville than any other place in the county. So you guys need to get ready. And, you know, I, I, I like Brad, and I think he's doing a great job, and I'm not saying that anything he said tonight wasn't true. But probably you need to cut that process down a little bit. I mean, it's detailed and things of that nature, but you're gonna need to get ready for a big boom here. Uh, in addition, I just wanted to let you know that I've spent a lot of time in this community. I think it's a great community. I, uh, the, the owner of the property developed Windover Farms. And I can tell you one thing, I know him personally, and he would never, ever do anything that would be environmentally harmful to that county, that, that development. So with that, I'd just like to tell you that, in my opinion, it's much better to go with the multifamily property than the, uh, commercial use that exists today. So anybody have any questions for me?
I see none. Thank you.
Before you sit down, Jason, just in summary, would your expert opinion be that there would be no negative effect on the surrounding property values from this development?
No, I think that the surrounding property may get a boost in value.
And is it your expert opinion that the proposed development would result in less traffic, light, and noise pollution than would be developed if it was developed as commercial?
Oh, absolutely, and I think our traffic engineer will verify that.
And your expert opinion would use, state that their proposed reduction in commercial space would not result in a shortage of adequate and appropriate commercial property within the city?
Uh, absolutely. I think there's plenty of room for commercial to go and much better land that's visible for them to go to. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time, sir.
You know, next I would like to introduce our planner, Jim McKnight, and I'll let him give a brief, emphasis on brief, Jim, um, history of his background in the planning and city management world, and ask you all again to qualify him as an expert in, uh, planning.
I do understand brief, okay? My name is Jim McKnight. I've been in local government for forty-two years in Brevard County. Uh, I retired in two thousand and twenty-two as city manager of Cocoa Beach, spent thirty years as city manager of Rockledge. And prior to that, I was director of development for the City of Cocoa and a senior planner, uh, out of graduate, graduate school for Brevard County when we wrote basically the original comprehensive plan for Brevard County. And I am a charter member of the American Planner, Planning Association. I have a master's in city planning from the University of Southern Mississippi, and somehow I got wayward into city management. I don't know how that happened.
You know, with that testimony, I'd like to tender Mr. McKnight as an expert in the, uh, planning world.
I'd make that motion. Second.
All who's in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Expert?
Thank you. I'll really try not to be redundant, but there are some points I want to hit on. I've had multiple projects in Brevard County over the last two years, particularly over the last eighteen months, that have been the same type of scenario where commercial is being converted to multifamily. And I appreciated the comments from, uh, Councilman Stokel about it's a land use decision because it is a land use decision. And in each of those cases, the setbacks from the single family to the multifamily were substantially less than what's being proposed for this project. This project is way over the standard that you would normally look at. So in looking through, and, and what I really did was I took the staff report, went through it, looked at the highlights of it, uh, drilled down on some of it, but basically looked at it from a compatibility standpoint. And as stated by city staff, the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area, and it also emphasized other things that go with land use. The project, uh, will require no infusion of public funds, uh, for capital improvements. Policy one point seven point eight from the future land use element states that a development must be readily accessible to infrastructure services and public facilities to be designated as an infill development. This is an infill development. Further, it meets the policy, uh, one point one nine nine whereby the city council should consider the capacity of various levels of service for infrastructure and services, which staff has considered and found sufficient for the requested development. Now, the question has come up about loss of commercial. And, and that question comes up in other communities. It's, it's not unique to City of Titusville. The standard of twenty percent is much higher than I see anywhere else, I will say that. I did a quick search on the APA and the Urban Land Institute. They basically said each community figures their own, but everything they showed was usually ten percent or less. But, you know, I can't tell you that that's the standard, that's just what the norm seems to be when you look at community to community. But every area kind of has to decide what that's gonna be for your community. Staff referenced the appropriate and adequate, which unfortunately is a subjective criteria. You know, I've seen other projects that I worked on, uh, where it has made sense to do the conversion, particularly when it is talking about a transition of land uses. And I think one, two other factors that really came to light when we were working on another project was the rise of e-commerce, the Amazon effect, call it what you want. I mean, I know at my household, I don't order it, but I get a lot of packages that are delivered to our front door. And, you know, it's made a big difference, the, the Amazon effect has. And we also have to be realistic. COVID changed the workforce. It changed the need for commercial property. It changed the need for, uh, brick and mortar. Not that there isn't still a need, not that there aren't gonna be growth of businesses, but it's different now. A lot of people work from home. My household has one person who works from home. And it, it is not unusual to see a community like is being proposed here to have a significant number of individuals who would actually live and work from home, thereby creating less traffic, uh, during those peak hours. I think the character of the area, um, the appropriate high-intensity commercial land use designation that exists today, when considering the land use change, you have to compare it to what is there today. Okay? And what I mean by that, not the vacant land. What can happen there today? That's your comparison stat, not, not the vacant land. So let's make sure we understand that. And what is currently permitted, what is currently entitled with the binding site plan that exists there. In the summary of staff's findings, it was noted that the subject property's requested land use amendment and associated rezoning would create a land use arrangement that will result in a land pattern that is compatible with the surrounding area, area, excuse me. Currently, the character of the area is predominantly high-intensity commercial with some limited single-family residential properties directly bordering the subject site without an appropriate land use transition between these uses. For example, within a half a mile, you have numerous large box retailers, multiple strip retail developments, six gas stations and convenience stores, more than fifteen restaurants, ten hotels either already built or in various stages of construction and permitting, and two car wash facilities. These high-intensity commercial areas located to the north and west of the property and residential areas create a need for an appropriate land use buffer between these higher-intensity commercial uses and the residential areas located to the south, which consist of a parcel of medium density residential, zoned land, and single-family residential. The current high-intensity commercial land use designation on the subject property is an intrusion too far to the south, approximately a thousand feet deeper into a residentially zone properties than other high-intensity commercial properties in the local area. I concur with the staff's assessment that the development appears to be the optimum land use pattern and is compatible with the surrounding area. The multifamily is an appropriate use to both buffer the commercial and the single family and the parcel that is own residential manufactured housing to the southeast. Additionally, a master plan places multi-residential buildings to the west of the property, creating more than five hundred feet of distance from existing single-family home areas and providing distance between the multi-story buildings and existing single-family homes. The concept discussed earlier of clustering these units is also consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the follow, following policies. One point two point one shall encourage multi-story construction to optimize the development of land. Policy one point five point one shall reduce greenhouse gas emissions by promoting compact development. Policy one point seven point four shall discourage sprawl by promoting compact development and improved blighted areas. Policy one point seven point five shall encourage the establishment of residential uses within one-quarter mile of neighborhood centers as an effective way to reduce vehicular trips and promote transit, walking, and bicycling. Policy one point, one nine point seven encourage flexibility in design by permitting clustering. And finally, point, one point one nine point one one encourage development of vacant and/or used urbanized areas to minimize urban sprawl. Transportation element one point one point eight support transportation system management that will re, reduce travel demand, reduce noise, and discourage urban sprawl. That's right out of your own policies. We refer to this zoning as step-down when you talk about compatibility. You're stepping down in intensity from commercial down to single-family, noted in the, in the report. As spending a lot of years as a city manager, I got three complaints that came in more than anything else. The first one was my trash didn't get picked up. The second one was speeding everywhere. The third one was when you had single-family backing up to commercial shopping centers, constant complaints, trash, noise, light, graffiti, all, all the things that you would normally think of. So that's a real-life thing that I lived, and I can say that it is a problem when you have commercial that butts right up to single-family. Infill development and urban sprawl. Can you get to slide two, Cole? There you go. The Bristol Project, which has to, uh, address LDC section thirty-four twenty-three, specifically addresses the LDC requirements as follows. Provides a transition between the high-intensity commercial and the medium-density residential using clustered housing with onsite amenities. With high occupancy rates in Brevard County, a growing job market, and economic challenges, increased housing op, options and opportunities are needed. Infrastructure and services are available within the urban service area without the need for the city to add additional utilities. It requires no additional expenditure of public funds, meets infill definition within the geographical boundaries and services in place, provides, provides a balance of land uses while protecting conservation lands via easements, and provides fiscal impact to the city with new residents to support business, increase ad valorem tax revenue to support the city budget, and requires no public capital outlay either to bring utilities to the subject property or to relocate the existing sewer and water reuse lines that could be subject to relocation at the city's expense under any other development options other than PUD. I briefly hit on stormwater. The thing with stormwater, because I heard flooding concerns, and I'm familiar with those, um, no matter what develops there, you've got to address stormwater, and you've got to address it on-site. If it's commercial, you may have a sea of concrete. I think by having more open space, uh, this project does, I'll hit on that in just a second, it, it gives you better opportunity to really handle as much stormwater on-site as possible. Finally, uh, well, actually I have two more things. The health, safety, and welfare. You go ahead. No, you're, you're ahead of me. There are, in the staff report, they were talking about how is that really met? And there are a number of things that you could go into, but I'm just gonna hit on six of the top ones. Reduces the maximum building coverage from the allowed. Reduces the maximum building coverage from the allowed 30% in regional commercial or 50% multifamily high-residential R3 to a proposed 15% maximum coverage in the planned development. Reduces the maximum lot coverage from unlimited coverage to 40%, allowable in the planned development. Reduces the intensity density by limiting development to a proposed 11.7 units per acre, which is honestly medium density, it's not high density, instead of the 15 units per acre that you could have in R3. The proposed master plan locates the building structures further back from the property lines than would otherwise be required in other zoning districts. Provides the master plan. It provides enhanced landscaping. It provides greater than the 35% open space as defined by city code that otherwise is not required in districts such as R3 or RC. This is a self-contained community. This provides conservation opportunity through an easement process. It creates a transitory buffer between single-family and commercial, promoting review criteria 33-83E, which states that commercial and industrial land uses shall be adequately buffered from adjacent residential uses. It meets housing demands as indicated in your housing element by offering one, two, and three bedrooms. It's less impact when compared to high-intensity commercial uses with regard to traffic, noise, excessive light, and trash. It's consistent with the character of the area. And what happened, obviously, was removal or full-access cut on the State Road 50 from Windover, and FDOT regulations has changed that area. I'm not going to speak to that, that's a traffic issue. But tremendous development in the area, including numerous multi-story buildings, and removing existing blight, okay, an undeveloped piece of property that's had things thrown on it, I guess, would be the, with a binding concept plan that really can't be, I would say, reasonably developed. It doesn't look like it'd be able to handle stormwater or anything like that, but that's for another time. Finally, as noted in the staff report into which I concur, the multifamily development is not expected to generate any detriment to the public safety and welfare of the area, nor will it, the development, generate or create traffic along streets and residential areas or clusters outside the PD area. Finally, my final comments are the planned unit development. Go to that one. Objective 1.19 of the future land use element encourages multiple objectives for developments using the PUD concept. Notably, objective 1.19, the planned unit development states that shall establish planned unit development concept for residential, commercial, and industrial land uses and consider other mixed-use land development techniques. Notably, nothing in this subjective requires mixed use, simply suggesting the city should consider or encourage such developments, with such mixed-use developments being more appropriate in larger PUDs that are more suitable to mixing such concepts or in the city's existing mixed-use districts. The following represents consistency with those policies. Housing options with one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, providing a combination of housing styles, policy 1.19.6. Development is self-contained, provides amenities, exceeds open space requirement, and provides conservation lands, policy 1.19.2, 1.3, 1.4, and 1.8. Buffering is established that includes the nearest sightline from a single-family home at 530 feet across Windover Way with enhanced landscaping, policy 1.19.7 and 8. No impacts on what is referred to as carrying or holding capacity, policy 1.19.9. Vacant land within an urban service area that should be encouraged for development and minimizes urban sprawl, 1.19.11, and includes the master development plan as required in policy 1.19.12. This is a good land use. This is an appropriate land use from a land use planning standpoint. It is a transition, it is downzoning, and it is compatible with the area. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I see no questions. Thank you.
Mr. McKnight, policy 1.19.5, we didn't address in your expert report, and is it accurate to state that's because this is not a commercial and office development, which is addressed in that element?
That is correct. It discusses encouraging approaches to that.
In commercial and office development, and this is not a commercial and office development?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then, policy 1.19.10 is related to encouraging mixed-use zoning districts, and specifically, it limits those in those unique mixed-use areas designated on the future land use map. So is it accurate to state that you didn't address policy 1.19.10 because this property is not in a mixed-use area as designated on the future land use?
That is correct. It doesn't meet the criteria.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in if y'all had any questions.
I didn't see any questions. No, sir.
Apologies for the length of the presentation here, but we do have to create the record with our court report here. Our final witness of the night will be our traffic consultant, Josh Black with LTG. He can provide his qualifications, and I would again ask for a final vote to qualify him as an expert witness, and then we'll move into his testimony.
Good evening. Josh Black, Laster Transportation Group. My career's been 19 years now. The first eight were for Brevard County Public Works Engineering, followed by four years working for Florida Department of Transportation, and finally, seven years with Laster Transportation Group. I've been doing traffic studies, working in both municipal and, you know, developer-driven projects, and been doing this for a long time.
All right.
Move to qualify him as an expert.
Second.
Could I ask?
In what?
An expert in what?
Traffic engineering.
Traffic engineering.
I have a motion for qualifying of the expert, and I have a second. In favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Expert.
All right, let's see here. All right, so the number of slides that you guys are getting ready to see are kind of a response to what we've seen from planning and zoning and the last council meeting. There's a lot of citizen concerns about traffic, and of course, we always know that's a big topic. And so to start out with, we wanted to discuss what can currently be built. You guys have heard from our experts before, you know, what we could do under the existing future land use and zoning. And so as you see on the screen, currently, we could generate roughly 41,000 daily trips. Now, that's a maximum-case scenario, but it's important to note that our project is only producing 1,400. So that's, you know, roughly a 40,000 trip decrease. Our proposed zoning, same sort of scenario, about a 40,000 trip decrease. And once again, that's a planning perspective.
Correct. And before you go on from the rezoning count, that's the, what would be allowed in the regional commercial zoning district, but you also did your study based on the concept plan.
Correct.
And the traffic numbers were in there, and, you know, honestly, I didn't update that slide timely, but I, never mind, it's on the bottom of.
Yeah, we got it. No worries. All right, so basically, then we looked at what was approved. So 2008, we ran the trip generation, and, you know, we're noting a 7,000-vehicle decrease from that analysis. So with that being said, for this particular zoning would definitely be a downgrading from the perspective of traffic, right? And so the other thing that kind of resonated in the comments that we got, you know, from the residents, from the P&amp;Z meetings and the council, was safety, which of course, I understand would be a big concern for your guys' as well. So, actually, that was the third slide. So anyways, so one of the things that was expressed is they felt that our traffic analysis didn't adequately represent the distribution of traffic. And so when we did our analysis, we looked at worst-case scenario, and that is all the vehicles would be going to Windover Way at Stairway 50. So if an intersection's going to break, it's going to happen with all the trips. Now, after we got the feedback, we decided to look into, well, what would happen if more trips decided to go down Windover Way to Windover Trail? And we discovered that the travel times almost twice. So, you know, vehicle behavior, people behavior typically indicates that you're going to take the least, you know, the fastest route to get where you want to go. And so as you can see here, you know, it takes twice as long to get there, so it's not likely. But just for, you know, entertaining it, we actually assigned all the trips to Windover Trail and still function at a level Service A. And then, a third concern that we had was safety at Windover Way at Windover Trail, and there's been one crash in the last five years. All right, so then we're at State Road 50, Windover Way. We've had 59 collisions. A lot of those were for the gas station. And it's important to note that we noticed a decrease in crashes after they did the directional immediate opening. Let's see here. And at 405 and 50, 41 crashes. Really couldn't find any patterns that this development would increase. You know, it's a busy road, and, you know, development's going to happen, but we could say that commercial would result in more trips going through, more potential. And then there's a direct access for State Road 50. This falls within the influence area of the interchange ramp. It's going to be a no-go from FDOT from a safety perspective. There's just no way they're going to let us do that, and as being a former FDOT employee, we would not permit that as-is. Colleen, have you got any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. On the FDOT, has there been a change in the access management standards from 2008 to date regarding specifically the existing access curtain on the easement area?
2013, they changed the access manager guidelines, and it's since been revamped as of 2023, and it will not meet spacing criteria from the ramp.
And then, you've looked at the Space Coast TPO numbers for the area, correct?
Yes.
And is it accurate to state that for State Road 50, the traffic numbers from 2018 to date have decreased and decreased significantly on that stretch of runway?
That is correct. And that's even with leaving out 2020 due to COVID. We're noticing that there is a decrease in traffic, and our traffic analysis, per the city guidelines, actually chose a blanket 2% whenever there was a negative growth rate. So our analysis was even more conservative.
And do the numbers, 2018 numbers, about 34,830 average trips per day?
That's correct.
Decreased to about 29,480 in '23?
Yes, that's correct.
That's about 5,350 less daily trips.
That's correct.
In 2018, about 15% decrease in traffic.
Yes.
Same question regarding the stretch along 405 and State Road 50, and the numbers 2018, about 20,330?
According to the Space Coast TPO, yes.
And 2023 is 18,520, correct?
Yeah, roughly a, what, 9% difference?
You're better at math than I am. I was going to say 10, but 9 is correct. Okay. And one more question I would have for you is, in your opinion, do, would this development have direct access on the State Road 50 via a commercial local road?
Well, we looked into this as we were going through our analysis, and the definition of local road, you know, per DOT, wouldn't be met, but per city, you know, technical memorandum, it would be considered a local road. However, there are no residential driveway cuts in the section that we're, would be connecting to, so I would consider that to be a commercial local road as opposed to a residential.
And does this stretch of Windover Way and Windover Trail function as a collector road, and why?
Well, so we looked into this as well, because typically with FDOT, you would consider a collector road to connect two arterials. And so in this case, Windover Way would connect, you know, State Road 405 and State Road 50. It would collect the traffic and distribute them out to the arterial network. So, yes, even though City of Titusville Code would consider it a local road, it functions more as a collector.
Correct me, but did you go over the travel times and how you came up with those?
We can go back to that slide, but basically, we were trying to figure out how to explain to council and the residents of Windover how we, the reason why we distributed everything out through State Road 50 as opposed to winding around. And so we, you know, decided to illustrate it. We took a vehicle trip, we timed it each route five times and averaged it, and that's how we arrived at the travel times. And so due to human behavior, it's pretty easy to say that people are going to take the fastest route to get to where they want to go. And so I feel like very few trips would decide to go all the way around, come out at 405 at Windover Trail. Now, with that being said, we did an analysis to distribute 28.7%, which is what we came up with based off of our analysis, and even with that, we're still operating at a substantial level of traffic.
And I believe you said a level of Service A, correct?
It is, and a level Service A is basically means no delays. You know, obviously, you're going to have delays at intersections, but, you know, as traveling down, you're not going to have a delay, so to speak.
And is a level of Service A the highest standard in FDOT's book?
That's correct. Even with the project trips, all of these roadway segments will operate better than most within the city and the county.
Any questions?
Member Stokel.
Yes, you may not be able to answer this, but I thought I might ask it since you're up there. So this is in regards to the piece of property that's not owned by the applicant, it's the other piece, on the north end piece. With your experience with FDOT, do you think that that could actually be developed as a commercial piece? And if so, would they, could they enter off of 50, or what would that even look like?
Well, if I had to guess, I would say that there'd be two different scenarios. The first scenario, which would be the easiest path to develop that property, would to be to convert an existing driveway, perhaps the gas station, to allow access to that development as well. In the event that they did want to seek direct access, while it would be difficult and very expensive, it may be possible if they were to reconfigure the ramps. But once again, that's one of those things that is very unlikely.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see none.
One final comment. Josh, does the existence of a current driveway guarantee the continued existence when the property has been abandoned for a year?
I love that question. So there's a common misconception about driveway access, especially along DOT corridors. And so per Rule 1497, Florida Administrative Code, there's something called, there's no grandfathering, right? There's no such thing as that in the code for FDOT. And so what it is, is if there's an existing use and it goes vacant, so let's say you have a gas station that shuts down, they have one year to open that gas station back up, or they lose any previous access, and they'll have to start over. So for instance, you have a vacant piece of property with a driveway apron, it hasn't been developed, and so it would be considered a change in use, and they're going to have to go through the whole process and be subject to the current access management standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we don't have any further testimony to put on tonight. I can't answer any questions now that you all might have before we move into public comment. I would like to reserve some time for rebuttal for whatever comes up, and we will be taking the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses as they approach. And just a reminder to all that everyone is under oath, and it's a sworn testimony as it comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move into the cards, I mean, we're getting close to that, right? Let's take a five-minute break, and all you guys, I know you're going to talk to everybody, but we got to corral you back quickly. So here we go. 9:20, we'll come back.
Where we're at, we're doing cards right now?
Yes, sir.
All right, clerk, we will call the many, many cards.
Karen Kulis.
And see how far we get. Oh, there you go, start it up.
Karen Kulis, 6638 Windover Way. We in Windover Farms have reviewed the Agenda Package Planning Department Staff Report, July 17th Tech Memo from Bristol and related public records for Bristol Proposed Rezoning SSA 3-2022 and Comm Plan Amendment CPA 2-2024. On behalf of the Windover Farms community, Sandra Klinger has submitted for the record our 30-plus-page objections to the development with exhibits in an email to each of you yesterday, and you also have been provided a hard copy in front of you. Our specific objections are focused on the proposed land use and zoning revisions and the master plan that are not in compliance with the City of Titusville Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations and the negative impacts on our community. Multiple violations to the City of Titusville Comprehensive Plan Policies and Land Development Regulations are identified. Speakers will discuss each with supporting exhibits that you have a hard copy of and have also been provided in your email from Sandra Klinger. Our objections are backed up with exhibits. The Windover Farms community will be the most directly affected by this proposed development. Windover Farms contains over 600 residences in a large lot, one-acre minimum rural residential community located adjacent to the proposed development on the south and east sides. The average lot size in Windover Farms is one home on 1.5 acres. All lots are at least one acre or more. This proposed four-story, six-building, high-density residential development with 50-foot-tall buildings is not compatible with our Windover Farms community and is not a viable transition to our community. Both direct access and secondary access to the development are proposed to be onto Windover Way, a local road. Access onto Windover Way is not an acceptable entrance and egress point for over 300 high-traffic-impact-generating dwelling units, especially when the developer has a 66-foot-wide legal easement already available for ingress and egress directly to Highway 50. Their traffic analysis states the development will generate over 1,400 daily trips. Please vote to deny SSA 3-2022 and deny CPA 2-2024. We'll be happy to answer any questions after the speaker's evidence and comments are concluded. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A party does have a right to cross-examine witnesses. A party has that.
So, anybody who speaks, he can cross-examine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on up. I guess she comes up, right? So, come on up here, and he will be very polite in his questioning.
Yes, ma'am. You stated there's 600 residences in the Windover Farms neighborhood.
We can't hear you.
We need to get you in the microphone. Yep.
I'll try it from here. Does that work a little better?
Better.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. You stated there's about 600 residences in the Windover Farms neighborhood, correct?
Yes, correct, over 600 residences.
And how many of those are within a half a mile of this project?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
And approximately, how many of those homes are within half a mile of this project?
Within half a mile? I don't know, I'm not sure.
50 sound correct?
Your point? No comment.
Thank you.
Good.
And, sir, mayor, can I just say, I have a hard time hearing. I wear hearing aids, and I've had a hard time hearing everybody speaking, so I would prefer not to comment and let them ask questions.
You did fine. You answered just fine. Thank you.
No further questions, thank you.
Next up.
Susan Langin.
Okay, now we've seen how that works.
Susan, it's L-A-N-G-I-N?
Hi, I'm Sue Langin, 7990 Windover Way.
Yeah, move the microphone up as people come and go. Try to move.
That better?
Perfect, perfect.
Okay. I am also on the board of the Homeowners Association. I am here tonight to represent not only the other board members, but also the HOA. Windover Farms has 630 single-family homes, and 403 of those are members of the Windover Farms Community Association. All homes on this end of the Windover Farms are in the HOA that ingress and egress Windover Way and Windover Trail on a daily basis. At the July 9th meeting, you received a letter from the President of the HOA, Tom Natell, that represents over 400 homes in Windover Farms. The letter was also read into the record at that same meeting. So, I will not read that tonight, since that has already been read, and it is in and has been submitted for the record. It is our position that regional commercial with wetlands placed in OR zoning and conservation is the correct and acceptable zoning, and future development for this property must access only onto Highway 50. The majority of commercial businesses within the city of Titusville are one-story-high; very few are even two-stories-high. All must access onto a collector or arterial road. One- or two-story-tall buildings can be shielded from view with vegetation, trees, and appropriate setbacks. Traffic for commercial businesses more than likely will only be between the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 or 11:00 PM and exit onto Highway 50, with nighttime hours producing very little traffic and noise. Windover Farms receives our water from Titusville. The water pressure is bad, and at times, the water quality is bad. We have to deal with regular chlorine dosing and drastically decrease water pressure very often. I can't tell you how many times I receive an email from our members saying, "What has happened? My toilet tank won't even fill. I have no water pressure at all." And we have no notification when these flushings will occur, so we can't plan on having a lower-water day. Now, you're going to put 300 more people into this problem, which is already a huge problem for us.
And we're going to conclude.
Please vote to deny.
We're going to conclude at three minutes for everybody, because we've got 44 of y'all coming up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, one question, please.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I forgot that part, go ahead.
Did I hear you state that you thought the regional commercial zoning that is currently there is an appropriate zoning for this area?
I think you heard me correctly.
Okay. And you do understand that regional commercial zoning would generate significantly more traffic than the proposed project, correct?
According to you. And I do say that we weren't allowed to cross-examine his people.
Well, this is how it works.
So, why is she cross-examining us?
He's a lawyer. All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just take one second and ask?
Yeah, please do.
Ms. Oliver, one of the witnesses passed out a package. I wanted to see if you had received a copy.
I haven't received a copy, but if it's the same that has been submitted to the council previously, yes, thank you.
Is that all, city attorney?
Yes, sir.
All right, city clerk, call the card.
Sandra Klinger.
Good evening, Sandra Klinger, 2680 Bobcat. Brought a lot of exhibits. First of all, I want to address one statement made about this is a land-use decision, and if you look at Article 2 Future Land Use Matrix 2721, there is only one zoning category for a PUD land use, and that is PD. So, if a property cannot meet the PD criteria for zoning, there will be nothing that could go in that PUD. Access has been our primary complaint from the beginning, from the very first meeting. Our concern has been about direct access onto Windover Way. Windover Way, based on the city's code, this is not about maintaining the quality of life for Windover residents. We are asking you to uphold your policy that you adopted. That's what we're asking you to do. Standards for PD development in the city of Titusville states it shall be so located with respect to arterial streets and collector streets and other transportation facilities to provide direct access to such PD without creating or generating traffic on local streets and residential areas. The city purposely adopted policies requiring access for high-density, medium-density residential and commercial to connect to arterial and collector roads. It is throughout your policy. Windover Way to be described as a collector road is ludicrous. If their example showing that no one is possibly ever going to drive around Windover Trail to get to an arbitrarily-selected spot close to their driveway, they are also suggesting people are driving through the six miles of Windover Way to get from 405 to 50? That's absolutely ridiculous. The applicant has an existing 66-foot-wide easement providing direct access to 50, which is an arterial roadway. The technical memorandum supplied July 17th still fails to include relevant and required traffic analysis of Bristol Development's impacts on adjacent residential areas. It is not just a level-of-service question. You have criteria in your policy that says you are to address these other impacts to residential areas. It did identify a problem with the existing yield from northbound I-95, in addition to the level of service on State Road 50 around I-95 already being exceeded. These issues need to be resolved. For example, a right-turn arrow could be placed at that yield, just as exists at Garden Street. They stated in their opinion, DOP will not allow Bristol to use the existing access onto State Road 50 due to FDOT's recently adopted access management standards in 1497.003. The applicant has had two years to obtain.
Let's go ahead and stick to the three minutes. Hold on, don't even move, because it looks like he's going to do this all the time.
If someone wants to yield time to her from other speaker cards, I don't have a problem with that.
No, we're not yielding time. We've got their three minutes. If you don't want your three minutes, you don't have to use it. Go.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Klinger.
Yes, sir.
You do state that the 33-5A2 Planning Development Standards require direct access to such PD without creating or generating traffic along local streets and residential areas. Is that a correct reading of the ordinance?
I'm reading 35-5A2, yes.
And that says local streets and residential areas, correct?
Yes.
And you've looked at the zoning maps, is that correct?
The zoning maps?
Of the city of Titusville.
Yes.
And between the driveways of this proposed project and State Road 50, is it correct to state that all properties between those two points are commercially-zoned properties?
Say it again.
All properties that bound the Windover Way between this project's driveway and State Road 50 are bounded by commercially-zoned properties.
Right across the street, I would have to look to see directly across the street as a residential home site that's Windover Farms. Explain to me what you're saying.
The driveway property here, this city property, directly across the street from the driveway.
Oh, I see. You're excluding Brevard County property.
I said between the proposed driveway and State Road 50.
And there's Brevard County property across the street.
This property is city of Titusville and is zoned tourist. Would you agree with that statement? My question is, is this property zoned tourist?
Yes, yes, it is.
Is this property zoned tourist?
Yes, it is. That's a hotel.
Is this property zoned regional commercial?
Regional commercial, yes, it is. That may be neighborhood commercial.
It's the gas station.
Or community commercial.
Commercial.
It's community commercial, yes.
So, is it accurate to state between the driveway point here?
Right.
And State Road 50, we would not traverse any single-family residences or residential things, and that is zoned tourist?
Okay, sir, so you're saying there will be zero cars turning right out of your driveway? Zero.
That's not what I asked. I asked between here and here, does that provide direct access without going through a residential district?
Is your driveway full access? Is your driveway full access?
That's the proposal.
So, that turns right and left, not just left?
I understand. But would you please answer the question of?
Sure.
Can you travel directly from this driveway to State Road 50 without accessing a residential street?
If you follow the unrealistic traffic-impact study produced by the developer, and all traffic only turns right, yes, all the cars only turning right out of the development would only pass commercial development. I'm sorry, turn left, would only pass commercial development.
So, it's correct to state that you can get to State Road 50 via direct access without traversing a local residential street?
In one example, yes.
Thank you. No further questions.
All right, go ahead and call the next card.
Diane, it's F-R-O-G-G-E.
What was it again?
Diane, F-R-O-G-G-E. I don't want to try to.
Diane, there we go. I was just kind of hoping Diane would get it.
Diane Froge, 5825 Windover Way.
Thank you.
And one of the things I just wanted to say is, if someone turns right out of there, I guess he said it would take twice as long, but he's assuming they go to the 25-mph speed limit, okay? And if they go 40 or 50, it's going to take them the same amount of time, and we have to deal with all the speeding, so.
Okay.
But anyway, you're not here to assess what might happen in the future on this property or the property surrounding it. You're here to address what has been applied for in this application. And let's entertain that discussion for a bit. There are other development options that are much lower-density that would be much more acceptable to our community. And there are all kind of what-ifs that have been discussed, and we have looked at most, if not all, scenarios. And one of those is to stay zoned as it is RC with commercial and OR. And this is the one most favored by Windover, of course. 5.5 acres in conservation would be and would require development to access on Highway 50, and the commercial height would be at most two stories. And a buffer would be required, and then probably it would be limited hours, you know, no evening hours type thing if it was commercial, or limited evening hours. Another option is a multifamily, medium-density, which would be about 10 acres, 10 units per acre, and OR zoning max two-story height and less than 200 units. It would require still the five-and-a-half-acre wetlands placed in OR and would require development to access on Highway 50, and a buffer would be required. And then there's the Live Local Act, which the law just changed in June last month. So, it would require a bus stop within a quarter-mile ADA access to the bus stop, which would be like sidewalks or walking paths to get to those. It would have limited height. The LLA requires the height only to be 150% of the adjacent height of single families, which would probably be around two stories. It would still require the five-and-a-half-acre wetlands placed in OR and would require development to the access on Highway 50, and a buffer would be required. And I'm going to run out of time, so I'm just going to skip to the end and just say, please vote to deny the SSA-3-2022 and deny CPA-2-2024.
And thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
No questions, that helps a little bit. Thank you very much. And I appreciate you guys' cooperation by staying on three minutes. I normally like to say you're finishing up that sentence or whatever, but we really need to stick to three minutes today, and I'd rather not, but that's what we've got to do, and I thank you, thank you. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Alan Froge.
Thank you, sir.
Pamela Malsberry.
My name is Pamela Malsberry. I live on Windover Way. If you look in your package, see Exhibit A2, the Proposed Plan Development Land Use Site Plan shows that there will be six apartment buildings that are four stories high and 50 feet maximum. There is no precedent for a four-story building east of I-95 until you come to Indian River Front Property miles away. This is not compatible with the surrounding area, or the local vegetation does not provide any screen barrier from buildings of this potential height of 50 foot. One full story taller than trees can possibly shield. The proposal is incompatible with our single-family rural residential development on the east side of I-95 adjacent to the property, our large-lot rural residence home. Per September 16th, 2021 Atlantic Environmental Assessment on Bristol Property's Agenda Package, this development does not meet Titusville's Land Development Regulations, LDR. Section 33-8 that states, quote, "Commercial and industrial uses within the development shall be adequately buffered from any adjacent residential use." Section 33-8 also states, quote, "The proposed development shall not negatively impact the quality of life for any adjacent residential uses. Negative impact can include decrease in property values and substantial increase in noise or traffic. If this development is built, there will be increased road noise. Any surface Google search on traffic noise and property value show there is an inverse relationship, decimals increase, value decreases. Noise increases, value decreases. We bought our home on a local road, which has limited traffic and related noise. Traffic is not an issue for us currently. What is now a quiet rural area with only neighborhood traffic will be bombarded with rude traffic with no chance of vegetation barrier blocking the six 50-foot-tall, four-story-high buildings. We urge you to deny SSA 3-2022, as this large and unconcurrent development will currently impact the amount of noise and light pollution affecting Windover Farms."
Thank you so much.
One quick question, mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not used to having them stay up here. Wait, that's for her, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you get the question. Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not remembering it either, so hang in there.
I'm in the club, too, of hard of hearing, so apologies. One question would be is, you made the statement that no properties are this height east of I-95 until you get to the river. And why would you not consider the properties?
Go ahead, let him ask the question, please.
Why would you not consider the properties west of I-95 that are greater than four, that are four stories or greater, as being part of the area?
If you go west, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am, there are properties within 1,000 feet of this, on the west side of it, that are four stories.
Make sure to use the microphone. Oh, I'm sorry, I live on the east side of I-95 and have no comment on the west side.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good answer. Member Nelson.
I think this is probably a Brad question. Windover Trail is a local road also, right? Or maybe it's a KB question?
Windover Trail is county.
It's a local road, then, right?
What's it classified? Is it classified local road?
It's a local road, yeah, local, yep.
And I'm looking at the map, and I'm like, Home Depot, Target, Burger King, Wendy's, they all go out to Windover Trail, it looks like.
Okay, we'll get those answers later, but yeah, that's how anything. Call card, please.
Charlotte Brunel.
How'd she know she was next?
My name is Charlotte Brunel, and I live at 7310 Windover Way, and I'm reading this for the Homeowners Association. Brad Parish sent Bristol an email on July 22nd, 2022, that notified them that the access for this development would need to be located on an arterial or collector roadway. Yet, the developer submitted a plan to ignore the observation and its proposing access onto Windover Way, a local road. That's what you were just asking. Why do you think the city staff report failed to tell you that the PD zoning is not allowed to have access onto a local road? Look at Titusville LDR, Section 33-A2. We have provided it to you with our Exhibit A/2. Many of our speakers will discuss the inadequacy of the developer's traffic study, along with intentionally-left-out road segments that study refused to evaluate. A planned development, a multifamily high-density development, a multifamily medium-density development, a commercial development, and a regional commercial development, all must access onto an arterial road or collector road. In none of these cases is access onto a local road acceptable within the city of Titusville policy, except on Rock Pit Road. The staff policy, the staff report policy review heavily refers to the traffic study in no less than 25 locations. The policy review requires a review of the traffic study for multiple reasons. There is no doubt that generated traffic is a significant issue for the city and local residents alike, not just car traffic, but bicycle foot and bus access as well. Why do you think the developer's consultant did not even mention this in his late-breaking write-up, that the PD zoning is not allowed to have access onto a local road? It is no surprise that the developer with profits in play would provide an expert witness to provide an opinion that supports their application, but even a professional opinion does not outweigh facts. The opinion piece completely omitted the discussion of many varied and much less intensive permitted uses under commercial high-intensity land use and regional commercial zoning. Those permitted uses, including things like florists, hair salon, car rental, or as in worst-case scenario, was the only developmental potential under commercial high-intensity and regional commercial zoning. These uses would be much less intensive and impactful on adjacent and residential homes in terms of traffic and trips generated, height and ability to use vegetation to screen out developmental hours of activity and access required to be on collector or arterial roadway. Permitted uses under the RC zoning include things like art studios, hair salons, coffee centers, bicycle shops, boat sales, car rentals, a bakery, deli, or a bank, professional offices, and grocery stores. Under the RC zoning, most of the permitted principal uses are lower intensity, would generate far fewer daily trips, wouldn't result in incompatible height and visual blight, would be more compatible with the adjacent residential area, and would not further erode the percentage of land dedicated for commercial use in the city of Titusville. No, it's no surprise that the developer's paid consultant.
Finish that sentence. Go ahead and finish that sentence.
Ignored the many lower-impact permitted uses established in the city of Titusville's LDR.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Desiree Weimer.
Never had to worry about that before. Do you question him or not? This is difficult.
My name is Desiree Weimer, 7205 Morning Dove Court. In relation to the traffic study, your staff report states, quote, "There is no significant impact to Windover Way. The Bristol Traffic Study Analysis identified 1,404 daily trips. The traffic study and the most recent addendum number two did not even include important, significant road segments. Traffic Study Page 1 describes the study boundary. The study boundary excludes Windover Way and Windover Trail, U-turns at Lowe's, Starbucks, and 405 and Highway 50. The study boundary parameters were chosen by the developer to exclude any of the local destinations like Walmart, Home Depot, Target, Taco Bell, Wendy's, et cetera, in close proximity to this development. When doing the study, if the parameters were correct for a large multifamily apartment complex that will spend many road trips to local establishments for daily living, these roads would have shown many trips and not zero trips. Literally, only half of the affected roads around the development were looked at. Look at the large exhibit, the red. The red indicates the road segments the traffic study did not even look at. The yellow road segments in yellow were the ones, only ones analyzed. The red are admitted road segments that obviously should have been included. Wendover Way to and from Wendover Trail, the blind sharp 35-degree intersection. Wendover Trail to and from State Road 405, Walmart intersection. The road segments were not only admitted, the trips towards and away from these segments are marked as zero trips. They are saying every single car leaving and entering the Bristol development will use this yellow highlighted road segment. Yet the development plan has an exit apron going both ways onto Wendover Way, southbound and northbound. If the development traffic is never going to go toward Wendover Trail, then why is there an apron that would allow traffic to go that way? Do not be fooled by the second traffic study addendum that was provided on July 17th. The addendum did not redo any traffic study for the 1,404 daily trips this project would generate. It only looked at existing Wendover Farms traffic and made assumptions on percentage of existing Wendover traffic that would choose to take Highway 50, make U-turn to go west on Highway 50 versus who would go to Wendover Trail through lights to go west on Highway 50, as if the only destination is to go west on Highway 50 toward Orlando. The new traffic study addendum number two in your package still does not address the red travel points as it relates to the 1,404 daily trips of this development. This degree of admission and inaccurate information screams deception. You rely on accurate information to make decisions. You should deny the validity of this traffic study and deny SSA 3-2022. And then really quick, I am a mom. I take my daughter to school. I can take either exit onto 50 or over by Target. I purposely go the Target way because during the school year, traffic is so dangerous at that exit. So I assume other people will do the same thing.
Thank you.
Glenn Bacala. Glenn Bacala.
Thank you. Couldn't hear.
Thank you. Glenn Bacala, 8182 Wendover Way, well within a half mile of this proposed development. In Exhibit Bravo 1B1, the staff report states, "The planned development will not create or generate traffic along the local streets and residential areas or cluster outside of the PD area." How can your staff make that statement with a straight face? Don't know. Study indicates that during peak morning hours, there are zero proposed trips when taking a right turn out of the project driveway. There are zero proposed trips when taking a left turn into the project driveway. Similarly, during peak afternoon hours, there are no proposed trips taking a right turn out and zero proposed trips when taking a left turn into the project driveway. Really? Is it reality to think there will be no one coming at all coming to or from that 304 apartment complex taking Wendover Way to Wendover Trail, driving towards Home Depot, Walmart, Marshall's, Wendy's, Burger King, Target, and not use Wendover Trail? Really? Don't get it. Study indicates that all of the 678 residents, 1,404 daily trips will only be coming from State Road 50 entrance onto Wendover Way and into the apartment complex. And states that zero people will ever use Wendover Trail, 405 Walmart entrance, drive through Wendover Farms, and take a left turn entering the development. Again, really? Oh, sure. Let's recommend the development using only 50% of the information that should have been presented. Let's analyze only half the surrounding road segments and omit the other half. Cherry picking. The traffic study and additional technical memorandum you have been, excuse me, have been provided on July 17th. Our farce. Wendover is not a collector or arterial road. So this PD high-density residential development should not be permitted access on Wendover Way in the first place. It's the applicant's responsibility to provide evidence proving they will not create any negative impact on adjacent residential areas for traffic, noise, or quality of life. They've not done so. Even the traffic memorandum provided last week claiming to address the community concerns did not address their burden according to your code in reviewing rezoning to a PD. The memorandum says, "This model does not include Wendover Trail, and adding it would require significant modifications to underlying model and a specialized study to calibrate the model."
Yeah, good. Thank you. I was gonna have you finish that sentence, but I think you sort of did. I bet you got questions.
Yes, sir. This property is currently zoned.
You need to speak up, Cole. I'm hard of hearing.
I thought I was the only one with that hearing. Too much shooting in my younger days. This property is currently zoned regional commercial. Is that a correct statement?
That is to my knowledge.
Okay.
But you're the expert.
I am not an expert. The experts have been qualified as experts. The, if this is developed as regional commercial, is it likely that the cars that are coming out of that commercial development would also traverse and come out Wendover Trail?
Cole, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you the future. I do not know.
But you're saying you know that all the apartment residents will travel and come out Wendover Trail?
That is not what I said, Cole. I said your analysis, this traffic said they all go left and not right. And I'll give you a written copy if you need it.
The traffic study speaks for itself and it's been put into the evidence that that's in the worst-case scenario. But my question is, if this is developed as regional commercial or any sort of commercial, traffic would be able to traverse Wendover Way and Wendover Trail both, correct?
I have no way of foreseeing the future. Maybe you do, but I don't.
Is it likely that commercial traffic would also traverse Wendover Trail under any commercial development?
Again, Cole, I'm not the expert. I cannot foresee the future. I don't know how you can because I sure can't. I'm giving you an honest answer. I have no magic crystal ball to tell you what is gonna happen or what could happen.
I understand your position there. Would you, I'll ask one final time and try to ask in a manner for a direct answer. Is it likely that with a driveway connection onto Wendover Way from this property that anyone traversing in and out of the commercial development would go through Wendover Trail as an alternative point to get to 405?
Can I answer that question?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Cole, I'll answer you this. I can't tell you if they will or will not, but they would be permitted to with the current understanding I have as an amateur and not a lawyer, not a traffic engineer. They would be permitted to, but percentages? No one can tell you that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Got you for the points.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thomas McLeod.
Tom McLeod, 7557 Ygritte Drive. There are multiple reasons this development should not be approved. The criteria for reviewing a planned development PD application that must be met have not been provided to you and many are not available at this development. Access for a development in a PD zoning is required to have direct access onto an arterial or collector roadway. See Figure 1 and Exhibit A2, Titusville LDR, Section 33-5A2. The Bristol property has an existing 66-foot-wide easement that goes into an existing truck stop driveway onto State Road 50. There is also a gas station that runs alongside this 66-foot-wide easement that has traffic coming on and off of Highway 50 into that business. See Exhibit A9 and A10. Using this 66-foot-wide easement would give them direct access to an arterial road and be in compliance with the city's LDRs, but they are choosing to apply for non-compliance. Another item in the PD zoning also requires there to be multimodal transportation purpose for PD zoning to be approved, which is intended to reduce vehicular traffic around the area where the PD is located. In this case, there are no continuous sidewalks from Bristol property to major transportation hubs. There are no sidewalks to the local attraction points like Walmart, Home Depot, Target, Taco Bell, Wendy's, et cetera. In a June 19th, 2024 email from City Planner Eddie Galindo to the P&amp;Z Board Member Ted Garrett, it was confirmed that the Brevard County Public Works Department has no plans for sidewalk improvements in or around the area on Wendover Way, Wendover Trail, or Highway 50. Also, there are no bike paths on the city portion of Wendover Way or Wendover Trail in and around this area. Please vote to deny SSA 3-2022 and to deny CPA 2-2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Question? Don't move.
Couple of questions. You spoke of the easement and direct access to State Road 50. Are you aware that staff has a condition in their approval to provide the bicycle path out to State Road 50 via easement R along Wendover Way?
Unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, I think I'll just take my time with this like you have. I was not aware of the bicycle path, but there are other sidewalks that are not existent. And apparently, there are no plans to build them.
And?
As far as I know. But, and furthermore, I have no more comments because I think probably the next speaker has comments also.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay.
Frank Rowe.
Correct the record a little bit. I come from the property right next door to where this is going in. Right down. And when the residents?
Name and address for the record.
Apologize. Frank, I thought you'd know me by now. Frank Rowe, 8201 Wendover Way. Okay. Can you reset my time?
Yeah, 30 minutes. It's already knocked off.
Disco.
Okay. So I live next door and to correct the record, when residents leave here and make a right, they do pass at least three driveways to get over to Wendover Trail. So yes, that was also incorrect. They would be crossing driveways. So the Bristol Development Application proposes that residents from 304 units leave their apartments and drive onto Wendover Way. Wendover Way is not an arterial collector street. Wendover Way is a local street in a residential area. Wendover Way is plotted in the Wendover Farms plat as a local road for Wendover Farms use. The City of Titusville has recognized its intent to protect existing residential areas from negative impacts such as traffic noise and decreased property values caused by traffic from high-density multifamily development by adopting policy that requires access onto arterial or collector roadways and no impact on local roads. Quote, "Titusville Plan Development Standards", Sections 33 through 35A2, states, "A planned development shall be located with respect to arterial streets, collector streets, and other transportation facilities as to provide direct access to such PD without creating or generating traffic along local streets in residential areas or clusters outside of the PD." Wendover Way is a local street. And according to your own regulations, this development shall not access onto Wendover Way. On this side of Wendover Way, half of Wendover Farms there are over 300 homes, approximately 600 vehicles that use this road segment to enter and exit the neighborhood. We all can agree, we drive the route which is the most convenient for us. The apartment residents coming out of the development would likely turn right onto Wendover Way, drive 1.19 miles to Wendover Trail, take a 35-degree blind left hairpin turn onto Wendover Trail toward the Walmart and 405 intersection. This route was not even considered, mentioned, or measured in the Bristol Traffic Study. It stands to reason that vehicles from 304 units, 1,440, 1,404 daily trips, or let's say even half of their trips, 700 daily trips, will turn right out of those apartments onto Wendover Way. Wendover Way and Trail will be consistently backed up. It will not only be inconvenient but dangerous for our neighborhood and will certainly cause a cluster right in front of our homes, which is prohibited by your regulations. This project is in violation of Section 33 through 35 from Titusville's Planned Development Standards. The subject property already has a legal approved access onto Highway 50, a collector road through
Go ahead and finish.
66-foot-wide easement. This is where their access point should be on their site plan instead of Wendover Way. Please deny these two requests.
Thank you, Cole. All right. Next up.
Carolyn Padfield.
I just want to show you where my property is located.
Have a microphone so everybody else can hear.
Carolyn Padfield, 8214 Wendover Way. I just wanted to show you my property adjacent to this planned development. I am here. This is one of my driveways that they will be crossing to come down to Wendover Way to go to Wendover Trail.
Okay.
See Exhibits A3 through A12. Bristol PD master plan identifies Wendover Way a local road for both primary and secondary access, which is not in compliance with City of Titusville LDR Chapter 34, Article 2, Division 1, Section 34-40A1B and Section 33-5A2. Also, Titusville Plan Development PD standards require PD zoning developments to be located with direct access on a collector or arterial road. The property has an established 66-foot-wide easement across the adjacent 6.9-acre property to the north, providing direct access to State Road 50, an arterial roadway. See Exhibit A3, Titusville LDR roadway classification list, Exhibit A-7, 2022 Boundary Survey, depicting easement from Bristol property to State Road 50 and Exhibit A-8, Official Record of Easement. This easement can and should be used as the access to Highway 50 for this property and not Wendover Way. It is clear the property owner was aware even back in 1998 that it was important to maintain an access connection to State Road 50. See Exhibit A8, Clerk of the Court, from the Clerk of the Court, that is, the notarized legal easement creating right-of-way signed by both the landowners. It is important to note that the easement connects to an existing improved concrete driveway. See Exhibit A-9, photos of existing driveway on State Road 50 with an existing concrete and turn lane. This existing driveway has historically used as an access point for semi-trailers as a truck stop operating on the property where the easement is located. The applicant notified the city that they had an easement with access to State Road 50 that could be used if required. Yet, the existence of this easement is also inexplicably completely omitted from the staff report and background materials included for your review. Why did the staff neglect to tell you about the 66-foot-wide easement to Highway 50? The new July 17th traffic addendum provides you with an opinion on what FDOT would probably say about Highway 50 access while leaving out that the subject driveway approved prior to 2009 to Highway 50 is grandfathered into the current highway off-ramp driveway requirements. They've had ample time to connect, to contact FDOT, but then they didn't give you their expert opinion to support Bristol going onto a local road. Proposed access for PD onto Wendover Way, a local roadway, is not consistent with Titusville LDR, Section 33-5A2, and review criteria Titusville LDR, Chapter 34, Article 2, Division 1, Section 34. Please deny this request.
You picked up the speed there in the end, didn't you? You're good with her?
Linda Rowe.
Next up? I'm sorry.
Linda Rowe.
Linda, there you go. Yeah, you guys are. It's all in one line there.
Good evening. Linda Rowe, 8201 Wendover Way. See Exhibit B2. The staff report makes a statement, "There are no adverse impacts on Wendover Way," repeatedly. But the fact is, the critical segments of Wendover Way adjacent to the proposed development were never even looked at. In the July 17th traffic memorandum, they tried to explain why, saying that looking at the other road segments would require more work, the need to calibrate their model. Well, they should have entered the segments into their model that are going to be affected in the first place. It's our responsibility to address not only the level of service but also the impact to the surrounding area. The Bristol study failed to include analysis of major road segments that are directly adjacent to the development and clearly will be impacted by the Bristol PD development, including, see Exhibit- including, see Exhibit B2, complete omission of analysis of Windover Way turning right out of Bristol towards the residential neighborhood, complete omission of the analysis of the entire Windover Trail going in and out toward Walmart, Home Depot, and Target, complete omission of the analysis of U-turn on State Road 50 out of Windover to go east on Highway 50 towards Orlando, the Starbucks area, complete omission of the analysis of the U-turn on SR50 and SR405 to go east onto Highway 50 towards Orlando, and complete omission of the analysis of the SR405 and Windover Trail intersection by Walmart, Petco, Burger King, Home Depot. The traffic study did find that SR is already exceeding the established level of service near I-95. According to the policy, the city must correct this failure to meet minimum level of service before approving any more development in the area. This study also suggests light timing changes and widening portions of Service Road 405. The Bristol Traffic Impact Study said there would be zero trips exiting the proposed development, turning right onto Windover Way, onto Windover Farms community to access Windover Trail, to take the shortest and fastest route towards Walmart, Home Depot, Target, commercial shopping center destinations. And there would be zero trips entering Bristol from Windover Way and Windover Trail, coming from, again, Walmart, Home Depot, Target area. You can't believe that. No one can believe that. We watched many, many cars going in and out of there without a development going in there. Of course, 1,404 daily trips generated by the proposed development would enter and exit both directions onto Windover Way and use Windover Trail, and doing so would create substantial negative impacts on the adjacent residential areas. Trips generated from multifamily, high-density residential are much higher than trips generated by single-family residents.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Donna Jonas.
Routine down now. I looked at him. I used to just send them on their way. Okay.
I just wanted to say that I have to close the recording.
Oh, thank you. I didn't hear a call your name.
Dennis Jonas.
I also just want to...
Thank you. Moving on now.
John Doyle.
John Doyle, 8178 Windover Way. I'm not going to go over a lot of this stuff because it's already been going over, and we'll try to cut deck on some of this. First of all, you know, we talked about the traffic. Traffic's been talked in and out, in and out. I was in quality assurance for 42 years, so when it comes to procedures, I'm pretty good with them. And when the traffic engineer was up here, he had made the comment that a local road, particularly Windover Way, would be considered not a local road but a collector road. Well, he also said that the policy says that, the Tidesville policy says that it's a local road, but that it functions as a collector road. In my mind, a policy would override anything that would function as, because the policy mandates exactly what you're supposed to have. If it's doing something other than what it's supposed to have, well, then that's a problem for somebody to resolve. But if the policy says that, then that's what the policy says. So it's as simple as that. I think most of us here would rather see something commercial there, simply because you wouldn't have as much traffic, especially in the evenings. Businesses close up, it's not going to be the traffic there. We wouldn't have lower height. There would be lower height, wouldn't have that problem. And speaking of height, I did have a question. The one sign that was showing the sight of, line of sight from the house in Windover to the department, or the apartment complex, showed a house on Windover Way. Well, the vast majority of the homes that would be impacted by this are to the south of the development, not to the east of it. So I'm just curious as to why the south wasn't considered in that line of sight, because there is no buffers associated with it there. So all those houses to the south are going to be exposed directly to the apartment complex, whatever height it is. And that's basically what all I have to say. I just, everything else has been covered by everybody else. So I just want to say I want to deny the 3-2022 and 2-2024, and appreciate your time and your patience this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate you very much, and you don't have anything. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I know that you have a notice. It's approaching 10:30, and I know that it's important to hear all of the speakers. And I know that we have two options, to extend our time, or we have the option of putting it on hold to the next meeting. And because we understand what's going on, it's my recommendation, and mine alone, if anyone agrees to put this to a stop and let's finish the meeting and take it up where we are tonight at our next meeting.
Before we do that, city clerk, how many cards are left?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six cards. And then you got the rebuttal. Member Stokoe.
Yeah, I'm thinking, just doing the math on... That's going to be at least an hour and a half more of just the cards, and then the applicant back, and then our discussion. So if we continue on now, we will still be going past midnight and then need to decide, do we want to just keep moving forward or stop at midnight? So I think regardless, I would tend to agree that I don't think we're going to finish and make a decision tonight.
Windover people, you can relate to 4:30 in the morning where we're working hard on not doing that again. So there's just so much important here that, you know...
We want to hear it all.
We also want to have our brains moving properly, because that was rough. I'm sure some of you guys sat here to the very end. So let me see. Vice Mayor, you going to add something more? Are you good with that?
No, that's what I, my recommendation is to put a period at this particular point with the 26 cards that are left, and resume at our next...
For clarification, this would be a continuation, is what we call it? A continuation, which means those who have spoken, this is all like one meeting, we bring them together as a continued meeting. Those who have spoken, your card will have already been spoken. The 26 left would be called, just like they're being called now. City Attorney, would you like to advise anything further?
There are a couple of things to consider. You do have a couple of more agenda items that you will need to take care of. And as the vice mayor stated, if you're going to continue past 10:30, you'd have to have a motion to continue past 10:30. So a couple of options. If you want to, understanding that this item may run rather lengthy, you could at this time do a motion to continue this public hearing until your next meeting at a time and date certain. But if you want to handle the remainder of the business on your agenda, you would still need to continue this meeting for a period of time to handle those items as well.
And just looking at this, we're looking at, what did you say, Member Stokoe? An hour and a half of cards at least?
Yes, and to give context, we have 26 left. I have counted 16 cards already, so we haven't even got halfway through.
Wow.
And looking at the agenda, we have a couple more items, so I think we're going to end up being here till 11, just with the other additional remaining items potentially, so.
And I just want to make it clear that the time doesn't concern me as much as obviously doing the right thing and doing the good job. And again, we've been here 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, and I don't know that we are as productive on either side. Add to the fact that we are all getting used to the lawyer questioning people intermittently. That's, and I'm not being critical, I'm simply saying that adds a bit of time that we don't count in the three minutes. So a three minute can easily turn into a five minute, maybe even a six minute. So I tend to agree that we could, I don't want to say table, that'll get us confused, but continue with this particular agenda item, and we pick it up. And just again, for clarification, that means that we would pick it up at the next meeting. Yes?
Yes, sir. It would be placed on the next agenda as a continuation of this public hearing.
Would it be the first thing that we would do, or has it got to come up?
It'd be placed under public hearings on your agenda. And those who spoke, have spoken, they wouldn't speak again, the clerk could keep track of those cards, or understands. But I do believe that the applicant had a question if it's going to be tabled.
Well, not tabled.
I mean, continued to another meeting. Did you have a question?
Yeah, my procedural question is, just are we going to get new comment cards that come in that are allowed to be brought in at the next hearing?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
You know, because then we're going to go out and get more people to come in and speak. You know, that's my concern with the continuation.
We haven't done that. I would suggest, you know...
Because then we'll keep doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah, I see that.
But wouldn't it just be a continuation of this meeting, so you would have technically needed to be here for this meeting to...
We would keep track of the cards you have.
Right.
And then those who have spoken, have spoken.
Right.
And then, of course, at that meeting, you would be entitled to your rebuttal.
Sure. And, you know, my other concern is, I understand you guys have other business to do tonight and respect that, is that we've at great expense brought in a lot of experts from long distances for the meeting, and they would have to come back in again. And look, that's up to them to do that or not. But I respect the council's decision on the continuation. I would request that we don't go down the road of opening up more additional cards to come in, because this could be a never-ending process of stalling.
I do too, but I just don't know the legalities of that, and I'd have to defer to you, city attorney.
Like cards would be...
I think if it's a continuation of the meeting, those who are on the list are the ones who should be called. But if that's not how it works, I need to know that.
Correct. We would keep track of the cards we have now for this public hearing, and we would continue this meeting based on the cards you've received.
Yeah. And then they could still come for other agenda items, like the rest of the meeting, but for this particular item, because this is when it was advertised as today, and we're continuing it on because we're running out of time, that makes sense.
I agree.
Yeah.
And again, we haven't even considered...
Like I don't know what the argument would be as to why not.
We haven't even considered our discussion when this is all settled between here and there. That could be a whole nother hour.
Yeah.
So we're talking 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning easy, just by projection. So...
August 13th is the next date. So my motion would be to continue it to August 13th at the 6:30 meeting.
And if I could have you also do that for Items 9A and 9B?
9A, B, and 9C. There's no C. 9A and B, right.
And it would, and second, with including the cards that we have on file right now would be the ones that would, so we'd continue our process. Like the applicant would not speak again for an hour, we would just continue where we are in the process, the remaining cards, and then any rebuttal and our discussion. This is what happens.
Okay, I have the motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Member Cole. Can this be a voice vote?
Second for me.
Second from Member Stokoe. Do we need a roll call? Can we voice this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Okay, we will continue this on the 13th. And with that, I'll give you a five-minute adjournment, another adjournment, recess. Everybody out of here?
Oh. Um, 11:30? 11:15?
11:15.
11:15. Move to extend to 11:15.
Second.
Why don't you just say 11:30? While we do this?
Yes.
Because if we say 11:30, we'll be here until 11:30.
In favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. And, Mr. Mayor, can I amend my motion that we just made prior to our adjournment or recess?
Yes.
You can do a motion to reconsider first, to reconsider that.
And vote on that first?
Yeah.
Do I, we have to vote on the motion to reconsider? Okay, I move to reconsider the vote we just had prior about continuing our meeting to the first meeting in August.
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of amending it and adding in a rule about the speaker cards.
Can we just do a motion to allow speaker cards?
No, he says we have to reconsider and then do the motion. We have to move to reconsider it first, and then if we reconsider it, we do it.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Uh, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries?
Okay, so I move to amend the prior motion to continue on the discussion of the Bristol Project at our first meeting in August. And we have 26 speaker cards already of people that came here to speak. And in fairness, I think it would be appropriate, if some of those individuals cannot make it, for them to be able to give their card to someone else to speak on their behalf.
Absolutely.
That would be my motion.
I got the motion. Second, all in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? So those who cannot make it can have someone speak for them. They may be heard.
Your mic or phone, please?
It's on. It's this way over there.
All right. Let me try that again. So those who, if the motion is carried, Member Sokol's motion carried, and that is that if people who are here tonight, and they did come up and ask that question, they were satisfied with if they can have theirs written out in red, and we will certainly allow that. Thank you.
And the rest of the motion remains as far as date and time?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get back to where we were. Been on that same thing for so long, eh?
It takes us to new business, Item 12A.
Okay, there you go. New business, 12A, City Manager.
This is the capital improvement revenue bond series 2024. The city proposes issuance of a not-to-exceed $3,400,000 capital improvement revenue bond, series 2024, to fund the replacement to the city's fuel tanks and to pay the related cost of the issuance. Replacement will be of the existing fuel tanks with a new split tank that holds up to 7,000 gallons of diesel and 7,000 gallons of gasoline. The project includes the covered fueling dispensers, the electrical work in the amount of $3 million, with the issuance cost not to exceed $40,000. Staff recommends that you approve a new capital improvements revenue bond, series 2024, in the amount not to exceed $3,400,000. Authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related loan documents with Webster Bank NA as the loan provider. Approve the supplemental resolution 11-2024, and approve the related budget amendment to fund the project with the first interest debt service payment. And Richard's going to distribute, if you haven't already done it, a letter of conflict of interest with the bank.
We don't have it.
And assuming that after you approve this, you'll have to sign a conflict of interest that says you have no conflict of interest with the loan provider, which is Webster Bank NA, and then we'll proceed on.
Correct. I'd like to clarify for council. The conflict of interest isn't part of your vote or approval, but this will be required at closing. So I have three originals. I'll pass down if each of you could sign, if, in fact, you have no conflict of interest. And I'll need three originals, and leave them to the clerk, and I can retrieve them from her.
And we do have Bond, council, available for questions. You will dial in if you have questions of Rhonda. Bond's calling. Collins, bond.
Hi, Scott. This is Rhonda. I am here. Just one point of clarification. We only need one of those certificates signed. So I know it's late, so if I can help the council out by just having one signed, then that's all we need on that particular certificate.
Thank you, Rhonda.
So what does that do to us? I mean, is this going to take place tonight now?
Yes, sir.
You'll still have the closing.
Not tomorrow, yeah?
The closing will be at 11 o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, that's what it's at.
Yes, sir.
But typically, you are the only one that would attend, not everyone will attend the closing, so we have the conflict signed tonight, because everybody's here.
Okay, so what do we need to do right now, then?
Do you need a vote?
Right, we will need a vote on Item A.
Okay, okay. Back to kind of normal. Any cards? Kind of a motion?
Move to approve the capital improvement revenue bond, series 2024, in an amount not to exceed $3,400,000. Authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related loan and contract documents with Webster Bank as the loan provider, and approve the supplemental resolution number 11-2024, and approve the related budget amendment to fund the project and the first interest debt service payment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Sokol?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Passes unanimously, City Manager.
We're on to 12B, which is the proposed tentative operating millage rate, set at 6.587 mils, and the proposed, did I say 817? Yeah, it must be late. The proposed millage rate of eight point, correction, 6.817 mils, and the proposed tentative voted debt service millage of .1936 mils. The city is, the proposed tentative operating millage for FY25 budget is 6.5817 mils, which is 3.59% above the rolled-back millage rate of 6.3536 mils. Set the voted debt service millage rate of the Riverfront Acquisition Referendum at .1936 mils. The maximum levy authorized for the 2005 general obligation bonds is .593 mils. The city manager's proposed general fund budget for FY25 is balanced at the tax rate of 6.5817 mils. The proposed millage rate is the lowest in 16 years, and is 3.1% below the current millage rate of 6.7945. Staff is requesting that council vote to approve the tentative millage rate as stated. Terry's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel?
I might ask one question. I know we're sort of whittling down the amount of unfunded things that the city needs, that list. How far down have we gone?
We haven't got the complete list from staff yet. You'll see that list at the August budget workshop.
Okay.
All right, call the cards, please. Oh, never mind. Hold on. Members Sokol.
Yep. No, it's not a question, just a comment real quick before we call cards. It was nice to hear in my briefing that this is the lowest millage rate in 16 years, because for those of us that happen on council, specifically for me, one of my goals was that, looking at the county as a whole, our millage rate was high because our property values were low. And so you have to offset for your tax revenue. And one of the things that I've tried to push here is to do things that would increase property value, so we could lower the millage rate. And obviously, that does result, you know, in those that have a higher property home, will pay more in taxes, but that levels it out. And so I was just looking at, I had asked Scott to send me just the history of our millage rate, and back in 2016, we were at 7.9, when some of us started first on council. And to see that it's gone down to now we're proposing the 6.5 is really great to see. One of the things I do like, well, one, this is not us actually setting it. This would be the notification, and so we could always go down, but we cannot go above whatever we set it today. And one thing I would like to see on request of staff is, with the proposed budget, seeing this one, but also to see one that's at rollback, would be helpful to kind of see if we did want to go lower or go at rollback, what that would look like.
We can do that, but I'll tell you, right now where we're sitting, we've deferred 18 new employees.
Okay.
Just to balance. And we're hopeful that mid-year we can pick up some of those employees. We've had to do pay adjustments, and we've also proposing a 3.5.
COLA.
COLA. So if you, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, or, but if you do, it'll be a project that we'll have to eliminate.
Okay. And it would be helpful to see that, because I think part of our discussion here, too, and I've seen other cities do this, is thinking about, because that's a good point, and we're talking about employees and retention and costs going up, and to be competitive, it's very realistic. I don't think anybody, we don't want to raise taxes. Things cost money, and how do you balance that out? So I think we need to be aware of what do we want to do as council members and mayor and vice mayor? Do we want to incrementally raise it, like this would be 3.59% above rollback, and we do a little bit each year? Or do we do some years we do at rollback, and then I see other cities will do it and raise it, you know, 7% potentially? And so there'll be times where it's, there's no tax increase, and then other times where you can do it gradual. And I just think that's something that we should take into consideration as we're going through the budget process this year.
So one of the, and we'll get into this at the budget workshop and the public hearings, but the urban CPI is, most, everybody's going between 3 and 4. We chose 3 and 1/2. The inflationary pressures are about 19%, though. And that inflationary pressures equals what it costs us to operate. An example, what used to cost us for chemicals at the water plant have tripled over the last three years.
Member Nelson?
And I think we always need to be careful, because when we ran, remember what our infrastructure looked like. And I remember talking to somebody from the water department, and they were telling me, for 20 years, we spent basically no money on infrastructure. And so whatever we had to do for the last eight years.
Clean up those decisions that were made.
Clean up those decisions.
Thirty-nine million dollars in infrastructure projects.
Yeah, we've got just a little short of 40 million in infrastructure working right now.
Thirty-nine million dollars in infrastructure projects, because it was not getting done when we got here.
So, you know, I understand the desire to keep the taxes low, but I also don't want to wait five years and get hit with, you know, our pipes stink, they're corroding, you know, we have sewer going into the river and all those problems. So I think there's a balance.
All right. Call a card.
Katie Delaney?
Hello, Ms. Katie.
Hello, Katie Delaney. I was hoping that after last year's budget meeting, that you guys would consider looking into zero-based budgeting. And I know that that is a huge overhaul, bringing a budget that is not doing that to zero-based budgeting. But I think that, especially with the amount of inflation and the cost of everything, it's crucial that we know where every single penny and dollar is going. And that's a great way to do it. And another thing is, I feel like we have to look at cutting spending more. I know that that's a hard, hard subject. Nobody wants to stop doing that. But when we have a certain amount of money, we have to live within those means. It can't be on the backs of taxpayers. And so also, there was, even though I don't really agree with everything in this bill, but the infrastructure, the national infrastructure bill, that's definitely something that you guys could look into for your infrastructure issues, working with our congressman to pull some of that funding our way. It's already been passed, so we might as well bring some of it to North Brevard, especially with the sewage issues that are going on and the water issues. There just needs to be more proactive way of doing this. Raising taxes every year can't be the answer. So I hope that you guys consider that, and I'm not here next year saying the same thing again. Thank you.
So currently, we have $15 million of grants that we've received and are working. So currently, we have $15 million of grants that we've received and are working.
I knew we were big on grants. I knew we have a whole group of people.
That I'm sure doesn't even touch what you guys need for your infrastructure, though.
I did not have. Next card.
Trenton Mansfield, and he's the last card.
Trenton Mansfield, Titusville, Redus, and Sarah, you said it yourself that your property values are high, so the millage rate is low. So just because you lower the millage rate, math is math, you know, math is math. No matter how you math it, you're still raising taxes. So, and I would like, I know we never want to, like, fire people or lay people off, but have we done an audit of our staffing? Because when I used to get off at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and I used to drive to the city of Titusville and pick up my kids, I used to always see workers sitting in the front of Public Works down there at Singleton and Derry, sitting underneath the shade tree waiting for 4 o'clock to come around. Like, this would be like 3:15, 3:30, and it's, and it was every day. So maybe we don't need as many drivers on the road. I don't know. And for y'all to say that you understand that you want to keep property taxes low, but your voting record doesn't even show that, for the past seven years, y'all have raised taxes six times. And what is the budget this year? Is it 125 million, Manager? Is that what, it's a proposed?
We haven't finished the budget yet.
But raising it, it was 121 last year, correct? 121 million?
We haven't completed the budget.
What was it last year? Was it 121?
I don't remember.
You don't remember? Y'all just passed stuff and don't remember? So if you, if it was 121 million last year and you raise it 3.59%, that's like $4 million more this year. So your voting records don't show it. It's an election year, we'll see what happens. And I, I come here every year, and it's all about the renters, and they've raised property taxes 10%, but that doesn't mean that their property taxes can't, their property value can't be pushed higher because it isn't there yet. Does that make sense? If it's, if they can raise it up to 400,000 and they're only at 250 right now, that means they can keep pushing it higher. So I beat the same dead horse every year, but it seems like it goes nowhere, but maybe this year it'll go somewhere. I don't know, we'll see. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Trenton, so besides us looking at potentially firing or getting rid of employees, what do you propose when the city manager mentions the inflation cost up 19%? Like, do you not want us to do infrastructure projects? Do you, you don't like us getting grants? We've had that discussion before. You're putting us in a difficult situation where you say you want to, you don't, you just want to raise taxes.
I'm not, I'm not putting you in a difficult situation.
What's your solution?
If you would like to sit down with me and comb through the budget line by line, we can surely do that, but we're.
You don't have anything right now?
We're seven years in, and it's.
But you do the same thing every year, Trenton.
Right, right, but I don't think it's my job to comb through the budget line by line. That's the, that's the people's, that's the people who run those departments. If you tell them, hey, I need you to cut this by this much, then they would have to cut it by that much.
But did you not hear what Member Nelson said about there were people and people in council that did do what you're saying, not raising taxes, and then people want to complain about spills in the lagoon, or my roads aren't being paved? You have to understand that's our job.
What was the budget when you started on the council in 2016?
Trenton, I'm not going to go back and forth with you on this. I'm not, I'm.
All right, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to passing the proposed tentative millage rates, the second motion we'll need is to do the dates of the public, the first public hearing and the final public hearing.
All right, then, Member Nelson?
Move to set the proposed tentative operating millage rate for the fiscal year 2025 budget at 6.5817 mils, which is 3.59 above the rollback rate, millage rate of 6.3536, and set the voted debt service millage rate at .1936 mils.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Passes. City Manager?
No.
We got to do it again.
Move to set the first public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 budget on September 12, 2024, at 5:30 at City Hall, and the second and final public hearing for fiscal year 2025 budget on September 26, 2024, at 5:30 at City Hall.
Second.
Yeah, roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. We don't need anything more on that, right?
Nope. Petitions and requests?
All right, petitions and requests. Did we already do that?
Good evening.
Hi, again.
Katie Delaney. I wasn't able to come to the last meeting because I was needed elsewhere to, you know, to stand up for our firefighters in our county. But I had to come tonight because there were three articles that were written in the Florida today, and I just have to stand up for the people of Titusville and for the community advocates that really care about our county. Minimizing what community advocates and residents are doing by saying, oh, it's only a few people that are upset, I'm not okay with that. And it's not just a few people. We had 30 to 40 people outside this building, two meetings in a row, protesting what's going on in this building. In addition to that, the city of Titusville, you all hired an outside source to do a survey, and their results show that out of 500-something residents that sent back in a survey treating residents with respect, 258 out of 270 cities in the lower 4%. Welcoming citizen involvement, 140, or I'm sorry, 341 out of 350, the lowest 2% of all cities in the survey. Overall confidences in the city of Titusville government, 315 out of 322 of cities that were asked that same question, the lowest 2%. Generally acting in the best interest of the community, 320 out of 326 cities, lowest 2%. Being honest, 311 out of 317 cities, lowest 2%. Informing residents of issues facing the city, 275 out of 277, the lowest 1%, only two cities ranked worse, out of 277 cities. These aren't my numbers. These are your numbers that you paid an outside source to get. And frankly, with the state of, of the economy, the, look at the city of Palm Bay and the mess that they're dealing with. We don't want to also be dealing with that same thing, and if it keeps going the way it's going, if people don't start talking to each other and including the city and being more transparent, putting the records online, why did it take over two and a half years to get the agenda on the website? That's unacceptable. The residents have, have the authority to know what's going on in their city, and that, what y'all said in that article was not okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything?
Oh, sorry. Regarding the agenda online, it's great that it's on there, but it's hard to read. Today, it was 803 pages long. I'm requesting that if it's in the, because it's hard to find it in there as it is, and I know we're going to change it later on, but can we in the cover page put where, so item A is going to be on page 103 or whatever? Is that, is that a thing, or can we not do that?
I don't know how that works.
Because it's very hard to comb through if you want to find a specific item in the agenda packet, and it's not like I'm on a computer when I'm in, out here, and I can't just go Ctrl+F and find it, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So if, if, is there a way that we could put it in the packet of how, find the page number so we can quickly find it?
I don't know, but I can get your problem, because I don't know how I could find it either doing that.
Well, on a computer, you can Ctrl+Find.
That's what I'm saying. If I didn't have this, I don't know how I could find it.
Right.
That's, that's an interesting point.
So I'm just asking if we could change that or where we can find it.
Going around to the guys in the back there who, the IT guys are the ones who normally come up with the solutions on that, so certainly run it by them and say, is there any way we can make it simpler? I don't.
Okay.
So I don't disagree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council reports.
We'll start with the elderly man on the end. No, that's not, that's. Okay. Then we'll come this way with you, Ms. Nelson.
I'm just going to say that the kids of the Boys and Girls Club are having a water day.
Yes, they are.
And our mayor has agreed to go.
I don't know what I'm doing, but I'll be there.
It could be dangerous.
I don't know what I'm doing.
It's probably going to melt.
Tell them to be polite. Tell them to be polite. I just need to get a approval, let's see. I need to do a suicide prevention proclamation. I don't, I'm not exactly sure all the details on that. I just got it, but I lost it. So I just need an approval to do a suicide prevention proclamation.
It'll allow you to do a suicide prevention.
So Mayor, I think what you're asking is that, you can do a proclamation whenever you want, but I think what you're asking is to have it done at city council meeting?
I believe so. They did hand me the paper to ask for it, so that means it's probably going to be here. I think that's where we did it last time.
Right. Do you have a?
So I, obviously, and that's a good way of finishing that up.
Do you have a date for that, sir?
I think I did, but I think I lost it.
I think the letter says the second meeting in August.
Tell me again. Here it is.
Second meeting in August would be your presentations meeting.
At 5:30.
Okay. So I need a motion for that.
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. I will do the suicide prevention proclamation, second meeting in August. Okay, Vice Mayor?
I've been busy, but I can't tell you what I've been doing.
All right, Member Stokel.
I'm going to pass.
City Manager?
No action items, there are several dates for your Budget Workshop, it kicks off on 8 August, and then you just approved the first and final public hearing for the budget, and the city attorney does have that added agenda item, subject to your questions.
Go ahead, yeah.
The city has received a petition to contract, which is to restrict the boundaries of Willow Creek and amend those boundaries of the Willow Creek Community Development District, and also a petition to establish Willow Creek to Community Development District. Staff is seeking authorization from city council to accept an engagement letter from Attorney Kenneth Arton with Bryant Miller Olive Law Firm to assist the city in these petitions with regard to the community development districts of Willow Creek and authorize Mayor Diesel or city manager to execute that engagement letter. A copy of the engagement letter is attached, and I've handed out, and each of you should have received a copy of this memorandum together with the engagement letter from Mr. Arton. And we're asking for authorization to engage him to assist in this process. He's the same attorney who assisted staff with the last community development district, if you recall.
And we just need to give the okay?
The okay to execute the engagement letter and to retain him to assist staff with this process.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
As stated, can we just say that, what you just said?
Yes, it's your motion to approve the engagement of Kenneth Arton with Bryant Miller Olive with regard to the Willow Creek CDD petitions.
That would be my motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Thank you, city attorney.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, and we shall reconvene when it's time. Meeting adjourned.